Welcome to the regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is December 13th, 2023. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance by Councilmember Welsh.
We come here tonight to celebrate the beauty of this city, the beauty of the weather that we have, and the beauty of the people who live here. We celebrate the fact that we have a government that listens to its people, in which we have a voice, in which we can speak and make suggestions. We celebrate tonight a government in which we can elect our officials and our heard.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gunter.
Here.
Councilmembers Cosden.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Shepherd.
Here.
Steinke.
Here.
Welsh.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Item five is changes to the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda, or do I have a motion to adopt as presented?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Item six is recognitions and achievements. Six A is Community Recognition Award. The Oasis High School Girls Volleyball Team, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's one of the best parts of the job. I get to spend a few moments each week with the greatest in the state and sometimes in the nation. Tonight, it's my honor to present the City of Cape Coral Community Recognition Award to Oasis High School Girls Varsity Volleyball Team. The team comprises 13 athletes who worked tirelessly this past season to bring the Sharks to victory. This past fall, the Sharks competed in the Sunshine State Athletic Association State Volleyball Championship, where they took home the state title. Though the Sharks were the lowest-ranked team in the state tournament, they swept Merritt Island Christian School in the title match. Head Coach Justin Altman took over the volleyball program this year, instilling in his team a sense of camaraderie and teamwork. Please join me in congratulating all 13 athletes and three coaches from Oasis High School Girls Varsity Volleyball Team as state champions.
Also on behalf of City Council, I'd like to congratulate each and every one of you on your achievements and what you've accomplished this year. Congratulations. Okay, the next item on the agenda is six B, and it's a presentation of city employees for years of service. At this time, I'd like to recognize the following employee for their outstanding service and dedication to the city. I want to thank them for their unwavering commitment to protect our community and uphold the values of integrity, professionalism, and compassion. I want to thank them for their contribution to the city and all the efforts they put into making our city a safe place to live. Thank you for being such a valuable member of not only the Police Department, but our organization here in the City of Cape Coral. Madam City Clerk, once I make my way down to the front of the dais, could you please read the name of the recipient along with their years of service who are currently in the audience today? And as your name is called, that individual would please come forward to receive your award.
Darren McKenna, Police Department, 30 years of service.
Okay, moving on to the next item. Item seven, approval of minutes. We do not have any listed. Item eight is citizens' input time. We have a maximum of 60 minutes is set for the input of citizens on matters concerning city government. Three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name for the record. And I would remind everyone that we have a decorum policy here in this meeting. I ask everyone to be respectful. No applause. And we'll start with you, Mr. Leon.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, council. My name is Richard Leon, resident for a very long time. I wanted to get up here first and remind everybody that I was a city council member. I sat in your shoes. I was a CRA Commissioner. I sat in your shoes. Not too long ago, December 23rd, 2010, I'll never forget walking into this room. It was my first time ever. There was a special meeting called by that then mayor, and it had to deal with a lawsuit that the mayor and former council members had brought to the city. Some of you may remember it well and remember the times pretty well. I know city staff does. There's an opportunity that lies before you today. You can govern in good graces as the people elected you and voted you to do. I know out of anybody in this room what your pay means to you, especially as a 26-year-old being paid $17,000. I understand. I remember the 40 hours I had to work and then come here 10:30, 11 o'clock at night just to read the meeting, get through the office day in the middle of the night. Some nights, I'd be here until 2:00, 3:00 a.m. Some nights, I slept here in the office. I was just too tired to go home. I appreciate and understand what you guys are going through, okay? Folks are upset, and you're going to hear that a lot tonight, and hopefully, we can keep a decorum. Because no matter what, and we disagree on this item, there are thousands of items throughout the year that we will agree on. And you work hard for this city despite the challenges that we face maybe today or tomorrow. I ask you and implore you to have a greater discussion than just an item on the consent agenda regarding the stipend. And I ask, if you are to pass it, please consider that $3,305,000 a month is too much money. I know. I've never, ever spent that amount of money sitting up where you are today. I understand your difficult problems, and please, consider that there is a good way and possibly smart way in presenting this to the city residents of Cape Coral. All right? City of Fort Myers did the same thing, and it was $14,000, okay? $14,000, and you're more than double that. Please consider that. And I want to, and I have five seconds, and Mayor, I'm going to go over just three, four seconds. I'm also, I would like you to consider supporting Jennifer Nelson. And I understand there might be difficulties with that in your head, but from day one, she'll be able to go and move the city forward more than any other candidate there.
Thank you.
What you do.
My name is William Mallark. I'm resident of Cape Coral, but I have a difficulty in speaking, so I'm going to use my iPad like I did last time, if I can make it work.
As a citizen of Cape Coral, comma, and a year-round resident, I would like to know what the city's development order is scheduled for the proposed changes to J.C. Park. I would also like to know if any construction is scheduled to take place prior to finalizing the design, and if so, what specific construction is planned and the schedule?
I have two and a half minutes. You can answer that for me. I would appreciate it.
This isn't an open discussion, sir. You're here to make your comments, but it's not a question-and-answer session.
So you can't tell me any of that information?
Not at this time. If you'd like to schedule a meeting with any of us, we'd be more than happy to answer those questions.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, my name is Marie Kavanaugh. Few weeks back, city workers demanded a raise of, I believe it was 3.5%. And you begrudgingly gave them a paltry 4.24% for the union workers and an insulting 1.25% for non-bargaining workers. Yet, you are trying to essentially vote yourself more than double what you're earning now, okay? And you're calling it a stipend, and it's semantics. It's my assertion you disbanded the CRA specifically so you could reward yourself at our expense by instituting a stipend, a devious and deceptive manner to get a pay raise you cannot legally give yourselves. But you found a way. Just call it a stipend and not a raise. You winded that the Fort Myers Council is getting a stipend of $14,000 a year, yet you want four times that. Why should we pay you four times that? You all ran for council knowing full well what the compensation was and spent a lot of money to get elected. All currently on the council have been there for multiple terms, so you can't claim ignorance about what the job entails. Membership on the city council has always been a part-time job. You are making something significantly more in what I perceive as a power grab and expect us to pay for it. Why else would you obliterate most citizen boards that were designed to oversee what you do? If you feel underpaid in a job that demands too much of your time, resign. Find another job. You kept this move under wraps and decided that the best time to shove this through is at a meeting 12 days before Christmas at a time when most of us are busy preparing for the holidays and not paying attention. You reprobates draw this up. It's my contention, the only reason you disbanded the citizen CRA was so you could specifically do that without the citizen's knowledge or approval. Why do you keep antagonizing the voters? And according to Resolution 35123, Sections 1 and 2, this pay increase or stipend is retroactive to October 1st, 2023. Are you going to pay the mayor $10,000 and each council member over $6,600 when you weren't even serving on the CRA? Your first meeting was in the beginning of December. So while many of us are struggling to put a decent dinner on the table and put a few small gifts under the tree, you'll be getting a nice self-awarded bonus for doing nothing. Your Christmas will be merry, ours not so much. My guess is the checks have already been cut. The CRA Board of Commissioners directs policies and programs and adopts a yearly budget, which is approved by the council. So someone, please, tell me how this remotely makes any sense. There is no oversight. Is there anyone here with more than three functioning brain cells that think this is a good idea? The CRA comes up with a budget, then presents it to the city council for a vote. Seriously?
Thank you, ma'am. Let's get one thing perfectly clear. There is no applause. If you applaud, I will ask you to leave. It's as simple as that. Go ahead, Mr. Starnes.
My name is George Starnes, an 18-year resident of Cape Coral. Several weeks ago, this council voted to dissolve the CRA board with no notice or conversation with that board. They then named a new board consisting of all the council members. This week, we have learned that city council will vote tonight on giving themselves a stipend to cover the cost of their additional duties. The stipend is $6,000 per month for the mayor, $3,333 per month for each council member. That's a total of $351,972 per year to replace a group of volunteers who worked for free. I do not remember seeing those funds accounted for in the budget that was approved in September. For the mayor, this represents an increase of 131% and for each council member, an increase of 99%. I wonder how the city's union employees feel about this. I noticed that this item is on the consent agenda, meaning that you would prefer it be kept in the dark with no discussion among yourselves. At age 76, I thought I had seen it all, but this council has erased that thought. After this council eliminated all the volunteer boards that they could get away with, we now know why. I can hardly wait to see how much they will pay themselves to perform the duties of the Budget Review Committee that I served on for seven years as a volunteer. Other than trying to be an informed voter, I have never been in politics or held a government position, but this cash grab by the city council pretty much kills the respect and admiration I previously held for those who I thought had the public interest at heart. I suspect I'm not alone. We'll see you at the next election.
If you continue to applause, I will cancel citizens' input. That's my last warning. That's my last warning. Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Bob Lawson, and since this is the last meeting of the year, I'm giving my 2023 year in review. If you're a resident of the southeast end of the Cape, a lot went wrong in 2023. First and foremost, we have the loss of the historic yacht club ballroom and swimming pool. In my opinion, it's irresponsible to demolish those public facilities on speculation without a concrete plan for their replacement. The next shoe to drop were your efforts to take away our serene neighborhood, J.C. Park. The residents overwhelmingly oppose your plans, but you claim there is some silent majority who never shows up at council meetings that supports what you're doing. In the unfinished business portion of today's agenda, there is an item about allowing a resident Scott back into your meetings after he was wrongfully removed. In my opinion, he is owed an apology. Continuing your accomplishments for 2023, you eliminated nearly all of the citizen advisory boards, in particular, the Budget Review Committee. And we saw that that passed only because it included a vote from a council member we all knew had committed election fraud and should not have been voting. The city's budget is going way up, over 13% for next year, something we see reflected in our property tax bills. I know from personal experience, it's painful if you own rental properties in the Cape. I also plan to speak on the consent agenda item about the pay raise, but it seems that that's been covered already. I have a question, though. Can the vote to disband the Budget Review Committee be revisited once the new District 4 council member is sworn in? Let's hope for a better 2024.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, everyone. I'm Sally Flash. I'm going to talk about the park. I thank the city for the events that were held at J.C. Park in November of this year. The first was the concert. That went very well. There was just enough room to park 222 cars, we counted them all, using the overflow lot, which you want to build a band show on, and park roads. And the single performer was set up in the middle of the park with music facing away from the condos that were across the street. The food truck was busy. The people enjoyed the concert. However, we spoke with almost everyone who came to the park that night, and almost all of them were very displeased that the city was making the changes to the park that they have heard about. The second event was the following weekend with the family camp-out night. I talked to every camp group. They all loved the park. They were upset with the changes. Where will we camp? They wanted to know, Dan. Where will we camp? I think these wonderful events should continue at the park. The portable stage that was set up at the first event to deflect the music from the near condos was perfect. We could go with that. And the empty field that was needed for that many cars because it was almost full. A portable stage with low-key entertainment would be welcome by residents. The next weekend, the families had a wonderful night camping and commented that where else can they pull in? And tent camp right next to the river. So, please rethink your plans for the park. Don't use our little eight-acre residential park as a commercial venue with food trucks, a bar that is totally inappropriate. You know, there's no drinking allowed in your parks, by the way. Did you read that on your website? And a permanent band show. Be respectful of the river and the wildlife that make the water and shoreline its home. Rethink tree removal and apply to the state of Florida for a permit to keep them. And then, you know what? Move on to the go-bound parks that aren't done yet and really need your attention. Thank you so much for listening to me.
Thank you.
My name is Larry Gillis. I've lived at the edge of Sands Park for the last 15 years. I'm the 2024 Libertarian candidate for state, excuse me? Really? Okay. Yes, hi. My name is Larry Gillis. I've lived at the edge of Sands Park for the last 15 years. I'm the 2024 Libertarian candidate for state representative here in Cape Coral. Historically, volunteers did the work of the Board of Commissioners for the South Cape Redevelopment Agency. They did this work for free out of a public-spirited sense of duty to the community. According to the proposals now pending before you, these services are to be valued at approximately $350,000 a year. Let me emphasize that these services have cost the taxpayers of Cape Coral nothing, zip, zero, nada, so to speak, until now, anyway. You have now dismissed these volunteers. You volunteered, you proposed to take over these responsibilities yourselves to monetize their free contribution and to pay yourselves the money. This would be in addition to the salaries you already receive. Let me remind you that the voters elected you to perform the duties of city councillors. These additional duties were not part of the package. The $350,000 was not part of the package either. You agreed to provide as-required services. Take Hurricane Ian, for example. Thank you very much. The $350 was not part of that package. You agreed to provide as-required services. If elected, so provide them. If you think that the CRA board positions are a proper part of your job, then do it for free. Thank you for your service. Just for the record, the mayor is currently paid, I gathered from a news article, about $45,000 a year. Each of the councillors is paid $40,000, total of about $325. The mayor would get an additional $60,000 a year, and each councillor would get an additional $40,000 a year. Nice work if you can get it. But, so, thank you. I'm almost out of time.
We're going to take a 10-minute recess. It's 4:55. We'll be back at 5:05.
It's four fifty-five, and we'll be back at five oh five.
I'm gonna call the meeting back to order. Officers, where's the officers at, Mr. City Manager? We're not gonna have a unprofessional and unruly meeting. We respect... This is not how we're gonna conduct this meeting. I'm gonna pass the gavel. I'm gonna make a motion that we cancel citizens' input. I made a motion, is there any second?
Mayor's made a motion, is there a second to the motion? Do we have a second to the motion on the floor? I do not hear a second. Motion failed. Motion fails.
Alright, go ahead. Go ahead, sir.
Make sure I get my three minutes here after all this. I'm here to speak in favor of Robert Shutter to fill the vacant council seat in District 4. Most of you are not familiar with Mr. Shutter, and with the current lack of faith in this board, that's a good thing. Mr. Shutter has far proven to be more of a public servant than anyone on this board. As an Army Field Grade Officer with thirty-five years of management experience, with a master's degree, places him to be more qualified leader than any of you. We deserve a voice who does not beholden to political strategists, and vendors, and who show support and favors for their friends and associates. This is the Purple Heart City. To neglect, to place a disabled veteran, proven hero in this board, should make you hang all your heads in shame. None of yous ever served for government other than this public puppet deal. The voters have spoken. They have already rejected the wilted rose from Texas. Bob Shutter should be, Bob Shutter should be the new, the council member, or leave it vacant. Secondly, I would like to address your referendum to award yourselves a stipend, or to be honest, an increase of salary of five thousand per month to the mayor. That's five thousand per month to Mayor Gunner, which equates to sixty thousand dollars, three hundred and thirty, three thousand, three hundred and thirty. Per board member, that equates to thirty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars. On top of the salary we already provide you. The stipend is nothing other than an unethical way to almost increase your salary to double. And if you want to, if you want it reactive to October 1st, we're gonna demand receipts for all the use of this, so we can call stipend from October 1st that you're gonna spend your money on. The city manager, whose salary is one of the highest paid in the state. Why? It's certainly not because of his credentials. I'm sure his father being top dog in the union played no part in his exuberant salary. I've had submitted one of many public records requests. While I believe I wouldn't invest money, my sister Paige Roush, which many of yous know, has decided to pay for any records request that I, I fill out. I have a small group of people for the community who have supported everything I've said. Would you please rise? Looks to me like your constituency agrees with me, and they're tired of your corruptness. Myself, my team, and the citizens of Cape Coral are gonna demand accountability for your shameful actions. I'm Smokin' Joe, and remember, when you lie, and when you deny, I'm gonna put the proof right in your eye. Thank you, and folks, I'll have this, I'll have all the public records requests on Smokin' Joe Nation Live YouTube, Smokin' Joe Nation YouTube. I'll have all the corruption...
Thank you, your time's up, sir.
Thank you, your time's up.
My name is Robert Long, and I, I'm a resident of Cape Coral. I'm a voting and taxpaying resident of Cape Coral that uses JC Park several times weekly. I've learned over the past several months that there are plans by the city of Cape Coral to manage, to make, to make major changes in the park for the development of commercial ventures. It is my understanding that the reason the park was originally created was to give local residents a place to enjoy the peace and quiet and the health of nature, and to escape the congestion, pollution, and noise of commercial operations. There are numerous other locations within the city that are appropriate for bars, restaurants, food trucks, and trinket sellers. There are also boat ramps in other locations. Developing the park as currently planned would destroy the original intention of its creation, and would also be a huge waste of taxpayers' money. I and many other residents urge the political leaders of the city of Cape Coral to listen to their constituents for a change, and show some real intelligence, real courage, and real leadership by keeping the park as it is currently.
I don't know where to start after what we've been through. My name is David Kalish, okay? I've been here four years and this, I have a better idea. I got a big mouth, you guys can't hear me? How about now? Okay, my name is David Kalish, I'm ashamed of all of you. You guys are pathetic, okay? I don't think any of you deserve to be in the positions that you're in. When you watch people up here spilling their guts and their hearts, and giving a crap about this city, okay? And you guys are playing on your computers, or eating, or looking somewhere else, not even acknowledging the people. After someone got arrested and thrown out, you're finally at least looking at someone at the podium. There's a change, okay? It's ridiculous. You guys don't deserve to be in office, and I promise, as sure as I'm standing here, I don't know how long you're gonna last in office. I'm gonna fight with everything I have, and I got a lot, okay? This is, you guys are gonna come down. Well, you're doing it for yourself. You guys are making it easy for me. Okay, someone, oh, let's see, where do I start? With Patty Cummings, when she got removed, and now you guys are gonna elect the person that didn't win the election, you guys are gonna put that Nelson in there, okay? You guys are running everything. I, I've never seen anything like it. You got rid of the Budget Committee, you got rid of the CRI Committee, and you guys are running anything. And the best part is the stupid raise. I feel like I'm listening to Biden and his group. It's the same thing. It's pathetic. It really is. You guys, you can smirk all you want, but you should be ashamed. You guys don't care about anybody in this city, and it's wrong. And you guys are in the position to help us and to work for us, and you guys couldn't care less. We don't even get to vote. Why? Because you figured out a way to where you could get raises, where you don't have to get the people to vote. You must feel very proud of yourselves, okay? You screwed the whole city, you should be happy. What else? I got so much more, but you guys got me all worked up with your BS. I know, it's alright. Oh, let's see, I noticed the girls volleyball team. We're all clapping, standing, cheering for them, okay? I noticed three people up there, okay? On the council, didn't look up and didn't clap. Couldn't have cared less. I guess their computer was more important. But yeah, we're here to, 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 you know, show recognition. That's BS. Okay, the drinking in the parks, here's another good one. I got three seconds, I'll talk quick. Anyway, they say that the person who's drinking...
Thank you, sir. I'm the one running the show here. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We'll go to the next person. We'll go to the next person. Every, we're gonna, we're gonna eat up the whole sixty minutes tonight, so we gotta get everybody their turn. Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
My name is Kathy Lopez, and I'm a resident of Cape Coral, a city I love. This is a report card on the 2023 City Council. Our mayor and our city council have failed to work in the best interest of the cities, of city of Cape Coral. They have failed to completely restore street signs, straighten traffic signals since Hurricane Ian. They have failed to save Cape Coral's only historic landmark, our yacht club building, even after local contractors offered to restore it at cost. Failed to protect Cape Coral's environmental Rotary Park. Failed to protect Cape Coral's number-one voted JC Park. Failed to complete work on parks that were started but never finished. Failed in overdeveloping Pine Island Road. Failed in paying Cape Coral city workers a fair salary compared to neighboring towns so our workers could actually live in high-tax Cape Coral. Failed in staying within any city budget. Failed in planning for better traffic management. Failed to bring Patty Cummings' empty seat to the voters, so they could install, so that you could install accomplices who favor your destructive agenda with no public input. You have failed when you disbanded our highly-successful and unpaid Community Redevelopment Association, only to be replaced by the city council itself, paying yourself huge stipends, doubling your salaries with no taxpayer approval, circumventing our city constitution, and eliminating the checks and balances to protect your citizens from this dictatorship of a failed city council. Thank you.
Mayor Gunter, City Councilman, my name is Sandy Hobus. I'm a registered voter in District 4. I just wanted to remind you that the night of the election, for the city, most of you congratulated Jennifer Nelson, saying her praises. She is the only candidate for this empty seat that has been vetted. She has lived here, she's worked here, she has been approved by the voters. I would like to see that she be recognized as the next city council. Thank you.
Thank you.
I still miss that overhead mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, long-termer, Luna Vara, resident of Cape Coral. First, I want to apologize to the city manager. It wasn't him that took away the AV. It was our new city attorney, who's from Sarasota, and I was born and raised in Sarasota. I'm surprised he came here, knowing the joke our Sarasotan friends tell us. But let's move forward here. Had real concerns about you taking a huge pay raise, circumventing the charter. I might as well not be too redundant here. I think the people here have said it all, and you did away with all the committees. You want no input, you even took away that machine over there. This is getting to be a dictatorship. I've never seen a council like this before. You've systematically eliminated all input from the constituents and the citizens. Why, I don't know. You did away with the CRA, I didn't ask you to. And I'm not asking you to raise your pay either. You did it. In fact, there was a crappy editorial about how you disbanded them and didn't talk to the ex-president, the lady. Read the Breeze. You did away with the committees? I wanted to be on that committee for the budget. Instead, you did away with it. You took away my chances. I'm very good at the budget. And I agree with Mr. T. Well, what are we gonna do here? Civic duty, folks, not a full-time job. Civic duty, not a full-time job. If you don't wanna do the civic duty, quit. Resign. I told you all that a month ago. I didn't even come to the meetings lately. Quit. I think that would be good. Five thousand and thirty-three hundred? That's windfall profits. If Joe Biden hears this, he'll get the IRS on you guys. He's hired eighty more IRS investigators? Come on, folks. You don't pay attention to the charter. You don't do anything anymore. Shame on you. Mayor, I have your Christmas gift. I do want to extend a Merry Christmas to all of you, and you know I had this just for you, mayor. There it is, folks. Do it my way or no way. That is it. So Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Navarro.
You're quite welcome, and here's a picture of us together, so people know that we're not exactly adversaries. I hope you guys wake up. No joke. I want that back.
Come on up, sir.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, council members. Scott Camp was just arrested and taken out of here because he, four meetings ago or so, he couldn't, he turned his back on you. To me, that's tyranny. Like, he was making a statement. And everything that's going on here is tyranny. You guys are, you guys are raising, raising your pay with a stipend. You got rid, got rid of the, got rid of the volunteer committees. You have no feedback. You're not, this is not a, you're not being advised by your constituents. And you guys don't care about your constituents. And I got a real problem with the fact that we have no recourse with you. And I think you guys should be, all resign. And if you're not gonna resign, we gotta vote you out, but I'm just concerned about the damage that's gonna get done before your terms are up. You guys need to make a great turnaround. What you're doing to JC Park, twelve, twelve million dollars. My taxes and my house here in Cape Coral went up this year. I'm sure they'll go up next year thanks to your twelve million dollars and your stipend and everything else. You guys are not fiscally prudent, and we need a fiscally prudent mayor and council. And I beg you to turn around, change your ways to become fiscally prudent so we can vote for you again. But it doesn't look very likely because you don't listen to any of us. So all I can say is, God bless Cape Coral, and let's pray that we can keep this place together because you guys are spinning us out of, out of our house and home. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Tara Jenner, and while I'm not a resident of Cape Coral, I am a resident of Lee County, and I've been asked to speak on behalf of a number of people who are actually doing their job right now and earning their paycheck, and they've requested that I come and speak on their behalf. A couple of things that they had mentioned to me was the fact that this is basically a board that is coming forward and issuing edicts that are nothing short of fiat. Fiat is the Latin word for "let it be done", and the word is basically a binding edict issued by a person in command. And the concern that's been raised to me by a number of Cape Coral residents is that by issuing yourselves a stipend... by issuing yourselves a stipend and using a loophole that's in your city charter is contrary to the term "public servant." You serve the public. And it seems as though that may have been forgotten. Why do I care as a resident of Lee County who's not here in Cape Coral? Because things that happen in Cape Coral may be washed, rinsed, and repeated in other areas of Lee County. And I can see other city councils and other entities turning around going, hey, that's cool. Let's issue ourselves a stipend so that we can circumvent the will of the voters. So I'm very concerned about this, especially given the significant increase and the fact that the jobs that you're claiming that the stipend covers are ones that were previously managed by citizen volunteers that cost the taxpayers of Cape Coral absolutely nothing. I'm also extremely concerned about the fact that the board seems to be working on replacing the removed candidate who was elected, Patty Cummings. And that there are rumors going around, which are very disturbing, that there's a predetermined decision on that, which gives a lot of people that I've spoken with concern that there might be violations of the sunshine law. So let me speak personally right now. I'm a member of a political party. And our political party has a process in which we can put forth resolutions. And if resolutions are passed by two-thirds of our political party as an entity, we can take a stance as an organization. And I have been told that there are a handful of people that will be presenting a resolution to this particular political party condemning the members who vote in favor of their own stipend and increased pay. And that resolution has been suggested to include not funding, financing, supporting, or including your name on any particular literature that might go forward for upcoming elections. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Denise Nystrom. I too do not live in Cape Coral, but have been asked to be here by a number of people that live in the Cape Coral area that are also at work. I have watched this entire county be involved in manipulating and placing people into office, in pay-for-play, in giving builders jobs, friends for favor, you know, favors for friends. And here at a time when people's homeowner's insurance have gone up, car insurance has gone up, electricity bills have gone up, food bills, gas at the gas stations, you want to give yourself a very significant increase. I'm sure that you all understand what the words uniparty, oligarch, elitist, globalist means, Marxism. That's what's happening here today. And now you want to take away the democratic process of having the people choose who they would like as their next city council member. Now, I personally have nothing against Jennifer Nelson. But I, but I do think that your constituents have the right to hear from everybody that it is that wants to run and determine who they want in that seat. And so I'm here to express that you are no different than the globalists that we are facing if you do the same thing it is that they are doing to us. And that is exactly what you are doing. And that I will continue to fight against.
Thank you.
My name's Joshua Krakow. I'm running for District 77 for State House. I want to speak on behalf of myself and being a lifetime resident. I grew up in Cape Coral. I have watched our taxes getting wasted. I've literally, growing up, I've marched across Veterans Bridge. And we were promised that the bridge toll would be ended after the bridge was paid for. You guys are nothing, the city has been done nothing but take money from their citizens and not have any idea on what is best for their constituents. We need to stop taxing our people. Stop giving yourselves raises, backdoor deals. We need to actually be held accountable as politicians because we are going to be setting precedent for our future. Our kids are gonna be growing up in this. I don't know if you guys have families, but I do believe that every man and woman loves their children. And we need to start acknowledging that and thinking about our future. I will make that short and sweet, and I hope that you guys understand that you guys are on put, on notice and that people are watching and that you guys are making the future in your corrupt, in your hands. And we hope that you guys do better in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's John Conley. Excuse me. My name's John Conley. I live in North Fort Myers. And the reason why I came over is I heard about this. And first of all, Fort Myers got the money. Then you heard of it and said, we'll do the same thing. The next thing I'm afraid of, North Fort Myers is gonna do the same thing. This is like a cancer running over the political party of our local government. Okay? I happen to be a certified public manager from Arizona State University. I have twenty years in law enforcement, was a command officer. And this is not how I treated my people. This is not how my people learn to trust me because I did not do this. Okay? The, the thing is, is there's just no way to tell someone that you're going to take away more than what they already don't have. Now, one of the old sayings to us, to the people I worked with is, before you took the job, you knew what it paid. You knew what it did. Our job was much more dangerous than sitting here as city council and staring out at the audience. But my people worked hard, and we told them straight out, you knew ahead of time what it was. If you didn't like it, nobody forced you to come and sign up. You did, and that's what you're gonna get paid. Our usually, because I did work on some of the budget, was usually ten percent if we got anything. So to go for a hundred percent is just an abomination of the system. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
John Sullivan, Southwest Cape. Inflation rate from 2019 to 2023 is 20.3%, according to the latest CPI U.S. government data. Northwind utilities increased 75%. That's 54% more than inflation. Cape Coral City Council cut Northwind in half, destroying economy of scale and reducing competitive bidding. In my opinion, that's why assessments increase $15,000 or more per lot. The fire assessment increased 58% 2019 to 2023. That's 37% greater than inflation. The public service tax increased 75%. And we get a utility rate increase every year through 2032. Solid waste assessment increased 52%, or 31% above inflation, which was voted for by the council. Voters retracted into believing the charter school system would be funded without local taxes. The council used the public service tax as a gimmick to help fund the charter schools, local taxes. Another tactic, masquerading an increase in salary as a stipend to circumvent regulations, putting Resolution 351-23 in the consent. Is a real slap in the face to the voters. Higher taxes are not because of increases in population. New residents pay more taxes on a per capita basis than residents that have been here for years. The most common reason for monetary compensation is exceptional performance or incurred expenses. Your Resolution 351-23 suggests you're underpaid. Based on what? Higher taxes, outrageous assessments, and your manipulative capabilities? Until this council delivers services in a cost-effective manner, no monetary increases are warranted, whether it be stipends or otherwise. I ask you folks to pull 351-23 from the agenda and vote it down. If you don't do that, I believe if Donald Trump stood in front of council, he'd say two words: fired.
Thank you.
Hi, and good evening. This is my first time here because I have to come and, you know, see what's going on. Okay?
State your name, ma'am.
I have been a Florida resident all my life.
Ma'am, could you state your name, please?
I'm sorry?
State your name.
Oh, my name is Jennifer Wada, and I live in Northwest Cape. Okay, I've been a Florida resident all my life. I moved here from Fort Lauderdale in 2007. When I moved here, there was beautification. Cape Coral was known for our little city and for our owls, okay? If you look around, I don't even see any more owl's nest, okay? You know why that? And you know why, Mayor Gunther? Is because we are building way too much. Okay? We not only have water, we have no water. The other day, I was in Southwest Cape, it was maybe last year or something. And then my girlfriend lives off Everest, and there's this big pipe there. I said, oh my God, what is this big pipe doing in the middle of your neighborhood? Do you guys know that they have to get water from Fort Myers through this big pipe? Because we cannot control what we have. And yet, these people keep on approving these builders to build these homes. And yet, the homeowners have to drill and spend thousands of dollars more to get water. Okay? Because nobody plans for nothing. They just want to build. And I am a believer of building and creating a beautiful city. But this is just too much, too much time. And first of all, you need to get paid for what you actually do. And if you don't, you need to step down and get out. Okay? And not only that, because you guys want raises or stipend, whatever you want to call it. Okay? I am disturbed about everything about this city since I have moved here. I mean, it takes, it takes me to heart to see what is happening to my beautiful state, actually, because I've been here all my life. And I moved to Cape Coral for the privacy, for the owls, the beautification of Cape Coral, okay? I spoke to Mayor Gunther a couple of years ago about beautification. Do you know that he spent $250,000 to figure out that the Cape Coral needs beautification in the, in the city? Oh my God, why did you even have to spend any kind of money to figure that out? Okay, you go everywhere, there's nothing. Okay, all I know is I have to put my own trees in, in the medians. I have to take care of the grass. I have to take care of all my trash around my neighborhood because these guys let these builders come in without proper codes, without proper garbage cans to put their garbage in. They're making these builders builder, these little minky-dinky garbage cans. And they blow all over the place. And then also these porta-potties. Okay? Ever since the last hurricane, you guys should have put something in place for these things. Okay, next hurricane, they're gonna be all over again, destroying our waters. Someone told me, someone said, they don't care. You're damn right. They don't care, people. Okay? Every one of these people do not care about our cities, and you need to go.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity for letting us speak today. My name is George Fernandez, lifetime resident of Cape Coral. Lived here, did K through 12 in Cape, did community college right across, and then went to FGCU for my bachelor's. I'm just here to remind everyone here today, especially the council, that, in the words of Abraham Lincoln, that the government of the people, by the people, for the people shall not perish from this earth. All right? The people here today have spoken how they feel on the issues. You are here to represent the people. Therefore, you reflect their opinions. All right? And on the topic of that, the District Four vacancy, if it is true what everyone else is saying about Jennifer Nelson being put back in, the voters have spoken. She has lost to Patty Cummings. Patty obviously got taken out, but Jennifer was the loser. You cannot put somebody who lost an election into a seat. All right? That is election interference, and that is stealing the voices away from the people. The candidate that I support, that I think should represent District Four, and represents my generation, is Jesus Rodriguez. I've known Jesus all my life. He's one of the most selfless people that I know. When it came to Hurricane Ian, he was day and night throughout the storm at the Emergency Response Center of Lee County. Throughout and after the storm, he was around the community, helping people, getting people, if they needed shelter, didn't have roofs, he was getting a roof on their houses. If they couldn't access their backyard, or they're too old to take out the trees, he will get himself and others to take down those trees for them for free. Jesus represents the people. Jesus is the face of District Four in my eyes. And if you guys were gonna put anyone else in that position, it would be a tragedy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, council mayor. My name is Denise McCleary. I am a 34-year Army veteran, and I've lived in the Cape for 10 years. I'm also running for the Florida State House Representative, District 79, which is this district right here. So I am very concerned, and I'm not a politician, I'm just gonna tell you that right up front, but I have been upset about how things are going in my city, my state, my county. And I just had to do something. So I am, I am running. And I see that you're really trying to, you're trying to vote yourself a raise for yourself and the committee members. And I, and I get, I get. This is a big city, and it's getting bigger. And from what I see on your salaries, I don't think that's probably enough for, as a mayor. But I'm gonna say, you shouldn't be doing it and taking it away from the people that have been working for you for free. They need to be, you need to give that stipend to them or put them on as a part-time employee. Okay? I think Cape Coral, again, is growing way too fast. There's not enough infrastructure, roads, the trash is piling up. We just can't support all the building that we're doing in this city. In reference to JC Park and some of the other developments that I have been to a couple of meetings lately, the Cape doesn't, they don't want this. They don't want that development. You need to reach out to the members in Cape to get a referendum and get those things on the voting block and have the people vote for it. You're supposed to work for us, for the people, okay? It's about time that you do it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The gentleman, the second gentleman standing will be our last speaker. We'll be at our 60 minutes. So you two gentlemen that are standing will be our last two speakers.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Ken Keeler. I'm an employee with the city of Cape Coral, and I am not a resident of the, of the city of Cape Coral because I cannot afford to live here. My comments are hastily assembled today, so please bear with me as I present them to you. The Community Redevelopment Agency consisted of volunteers, and it was disbanded and replaced by council members. Council members then set themselves to be compensated for the efforts that were provided as volunteers by the Community Redevelopment Agency. I see that council set a meeting schedule that consists of six days. And for this, you are voting yourself a, roughly a bimonthly stipend of over $6,000. I'm a struggling city of Cape Coral employee who cannot afford to live in the city where I work. We city employees were awarded a raise of 4.24%. I would like to suggest that you award yourselves that same annual stipend of 4.2% over your current salary. That would amount to roughly $1,705 annually, or roughly $142 a month. It's difficult for employees to get by. If city employees cannot achieve a comparable pay increase, I'd suggest that we also receive a stipend to cover the increased cost of living in city of Cape Coral and transportation to and from the city of Cape Coral across a bridge that has been long paid for and is no longer staffed by city employees and replaced by automation. Please be as fiscally aware of the needs of city employees as you're aware of your own fiscal needs and consider compensating your employees better. I also would like to voice my approval of Jesus Rodriguez as a council member replacement for Seat Four. Ever since I've known him, he has volunteered his time, his efforts, and his enthusiasm for many events around the city. He's a wonderful participant. He's approachable. And ever since I've known him, he has told me that he is going to be the me that he is going to be the mayor of Cape Coral one day. So watch out for him, he's coming.
I raise, I rise actually to a point of order that I would like--
State your name, sir.
Pardon?
State your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, I intended to do that. My name is John Doobie, and I raise, rise to a point of order that I would like the chair to answer. I'm looking at your own rules, which indicate that any person removed, and I'm reading from it directly, from a council meeting shall be barred from further attendance at that council meeting. Mr. Kemp was removed today from a subsequent meeting in what appears to be a violation of your own rules. I was not here when he was removed originally. I have a law degree, I do not practice here in Florida, I worked in California, but I have a knowledge of the law. And my understanding is he was removed for turning his back on the council members. Just as burning a flag has been ruled by the United States Supreme Court as demonstrative free speech, turning his back on the council is also demonstrative free speech protected by the United States Supreme Court under the First Amendment. I do not understand why demonstrative free speech was used as a pretext for removing him in the first place, but in particular, I do not understand how you can remove him from a meeting today when your own rules state that he could only be removed from that meeting and not subsequent meetings. I think it was wrong, and I think he should not have been arrested. I won't offer a legal opinion, but if I were him, I would certainly get an attorney to see if, given your rules, which are limited to the meeting from which he was originally removed, warrant arrest and removal from a subsequent meeting which does not conform to your rules. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Citizens' input is now closed. Is there any council discussion on citizens' input? Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you. With the last speaker talking about Mr. Kemp, he was removed, I'd like to ask the city attorney to clarify that, one, we had his item of being allowed back into meetings on the agenda later today. We were going to have a discussion on it, and I believe he had the opportunity to wait for that discussion.
That agenda item was on today's agenda. He was aware that he wasn't allowed to return, he decided to return anyway. That was a violation of the council rules. He refused to abide by that determination, and thus required his removal. He was told that it was on the agenda for today, and despite knowing that he wasn't allowed to return, he returned anyway in violation.
So I just wanted to make that clear. We're not trying to keep people out of the meetings. There's, there's rules and procedures, and he was told about those procedures, and he still decided to come. So we weren't removing him for the fact that he turned his back or did things. There's decorum that we need to keep up here, and he violated that, so, thank you, that's all.
Any other council discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Item 9A, is the consent agenda. I'll now open up the consent agenda for council to pull any items, or is there a motion to approve, the consent agenda is presented?
Motion to approve.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Nay.
Cosden.
Aye.
Gunther.
Aye.
Five ayes, one nay, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to Item 9B, appointments to boards and committees. We do not have any listed. Item 9C is unfinished business, follow-up items for council. There's none listed on that particular topic. Is there any topics that council need to follow up on? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Item C2, and this is in light of the individuals that we had removed from the meeting here tonight. I provided a copy of the, copy of the letter or the request from the resident, and stuck that on the agenda to have a discussion. We can either have that discussion tonight, or we can do a continuance and have it at a later date. So open it up for council discussion. Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you. With the resident being here, and with the actions, even after being told that we hadn't discussed this yet, I think it'd be better if we moved this item to our first Cal meeting, so we can discuss possible options, because I know the way our, our city council rules are written, that I think they are not quite clear enough, that if it's a non-arrest or a non-sort of aggressive reason why they're removed, that maybe we could put a limit of one or two meetings. I just think it'd be better if we had the time in the Cal meeting to discuss other options, as far as if it was a violent removal, if the person was belligerent, if they, like say, they threw something at council members, and have some sort of escalators in our council rules. So I don't know at this point, with him being here, knowing that he couldn't, that I want to discuss this, I'd rather have further discussions in a Cal meeting.
Councilmembers, Steinke.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, it might, it might help, and I know that in, in my one-on-one meetings, there was discussion around this, and as I understand it, if it can be confirmed currently, the rules state that it takes definitive action to allow a return to the meeting. And there was an intent to have it a more automated return allowed by making a change, and in the meantime, we brought this on the agenda tonight, to take the definitive action to allow the return to the meeting. And then we all saw what happened before, we could take the action to allow the citizen to return to the meeting. So along with this particular action in this instance, I believe it's also the intention of this council to change the rules to allow a much more automated process, to allow the return without a required definitive action. Could you speak to that?
So you are correct, Councilmember Steinke. The rules required that there be action by the majority of the council. The individual did submit a letter, that letter was dated November 15th of the year 2023, where he states expressly that he requests to be permitted to attend future meetings. So he was aware that he wasn't allowed to attend the future meetings. Based upon the council rules, he attended it anyway, he was removed. To answer your additional question, it is the intent to make it a more automated process based upon the removal, if there is in fact a violation of the decorum rules that you all have governed, and that will delineate what type of essentially period of time that removal will be, based upon the individual's conduct. And that's something that we will be talking about in a future committee of the whole meeting. Hopefully, that answered your question.
Yeah, you did, thank you. And so that, in a sense, addresses, I believe, the whole idea of bringing this to a Cal meeting to discuss, how does it work, make sure that we have a more automated, clear process to make that happen. And, and so I would support addressing this at the same time that we talk about what, what are the rules, and how does someone come back?
Is that a motion?
Well--
Sir, this isn't an open discussion.
Some of us can't hear him.
So whatever action that we take as a council, first of all, we can have a discussion at a committee at the whole, but any formalized action has to happen at a regular meeting, which is a voting meeting. So we can discuss the policy moving forward if we want to change it, and then bring that change back to a vote at a regular meeting. In all honesty, when the individual sent the letter, I knew our current rules state that by majority vote of this council, we would make a determination if and when that individual would be allowed back in. Coming into the meeting tonight, my intent and recommendation was going to allow the individual to return. Now, in hindsight, the actions that occurred today, you know, that makes it a little more of a complex situation. So I think you almost have to separate this. Our rules are the way they are today. If we want to make that change, that's great, and we will do that by a majority vote of this council.
I think that's a big bunch of bullshit I heard.
Could you remove this guy, please, this gentleman?
Now, now you're going to take me out because I--
Yeah, because you spoke up. So that was what the intent that I wanted tonight, you know, to allow that individual back in. Now, I think what we have to ask ourselves as a council is, do we want to have the discussion and possibly change the rules? Or do we want to make a determination tonight? Or do we want to continuous, have the discussion, develop the policy, and then put that on our next regular meeting after the Cal? Which is what I think we should probably do. So that's my recommendation. Councilmember Welsh.
Yeah, with, with that gentleman being removed tonight, does it pretty much start his time again, or does it continue? That was my question for the, like, could we even vote on this tonight, because he was removed tonight?
You could vote on it tonight.
Okay.
If you wanted to.
So I was all in favor early on this morning to, you know, looking at this, I thought he was following the rules the right way. He didn't do anything too aggressive. He didn't follow proper decorum. But with him doing the same thing again tonight, I would prefer to vote on this after we have set new guidelines, so.
Do I have a motion for a continuance?
Continuance until after, to a date certain, or can I just motion to continue?
That's a question for Mr. City Attorney.
You can, you can continue the matter until such time that the committee of the whole takes up the amendment to the rules. Yeah, I mean, the effect is you're denying, you're denying--
Yeah, so instead of motion to continue, I would just make a motion to deny at this time, knowing that they could reapply, and after the, ever, everything is set.
You could certainly do that, and the rule amendment may ultimately clarify the ability for this individual to return.
Yeah, I don't want to make a motion to deny, so if I can make a motion to continue this request till after a Cal meeting--
Have a discussion--
Have a discussion about, yeah, that's what I'd like to do.
That's an appropriate motion.
Okay, I'd like to make that motion to continue this to the next meeting following a Cal discussion.
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Gunther.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we will move on to Items 9D and D, E, and F. There's nothing listed for personnel actions, petitions to council, or follow-up items from city management. Mr. City Manager, you have any follow-up items not listed?
I have none.
Okay, we'll move on to Item 10, ordinances and resolutions. We have Item 10A is public hearings, quasi-judicial hearings. The first hearing is Resolution 321-23. Madam City Clerk, please call, please read the title.
Resolution 321-23, a resolution providing for the vacation of plat for an alley and the underlying easements located between lots 1 through 9 and lots 54 through 62, Block 3071, Cape Coral Unit 62, providing for the vacation of plat for platted public utility and drainage easements adjacent to the platted alley lying in lots 6 through 9 and lots 54 through 57, Block 3071, Cape Coral Unit 62. Property located at 2209 and 2219 Skyline Boulevard and 2208 through 2220 Southwest Seventh Place, providing an effective date.
Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. In reference to Resolution Number that was just read, this is a quasi-judicial hearing, and this is the opportunity for any council members to identify whether or not there have been any ex parte communications pursuant to the city's code.
Thank you. Any council members have any ex parte communications to report? Seeing none, this is a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the record, Patrick White, Cape Coral Planning Department. The resolution before you read into the record is for a case we know as VAC 2235. It is a vacation request made from multiple owners. Ms. Lynda Miller from Avalon Engineering is the authorized representative. Together, these owners wish to vacate a little over 7,500 square feet of platted alley right-of-way, along with all underlying public utility and drainage easements, and an additional 1,700 square feet of platted PUEs that are adjacent to an alley lying along lots 6 through 9 and lots 54 to 57, all within Block 3071. This is an aerial of the subject alley. I've highlighted and read, the affected parcels are highlighted in blue. The parcels adjacent to both sides are all Zone C1 and have a commercial professional future land use designation. Together, the petitioners on this application own a little over two acres. All of the properties are unimproved. A 20-foot-wide alley presently separates these sites, dividing them into the east and west side of the block. Staff is reviewing a site plan, SDP 22140, which involves a northern parcel. On the screen before you, the top half of the proposed alley vacation is shown on the left, that's Exhibit, I believe that's titled A1, and the bottom half, Exhibit A2. These PUEs are proposed to be vacated, these are Exhibits B1 and B2. And then we're requiring some reservations. These reservations are necessary so that the city can maintain a six-foot continuous perimeter easement along these two new sites. Staff analyzes this case in accordance with LDC 3.4.5. B, and I note that a cross-access easement is being provided by the applicant to ensure access to the remaining alley. That, as I mentioned, we are keeping the four reservations that are conditioned in the resolution in order to ensure a six-foot-wide perimeter easement. We've received all three required utility letters. This vacation is, one comprehensive plan that supports this element, that supports this vacation is Policy 3.6. Exhibit D is that cross-access easement that's referenced in staff's conditions. Staff is recommending approval of Resolution 32123 with the conditions included in the resolution. The hearing examiner, following a public hearing on October 17th, issued a report recommending approval. Prior to HECS, the HECS hearing, I received one call for information, it's been quiet since. I will stand by for any questions.
Thank you. I know open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 321-23, please come forward.
Good evening, and happy holidays to all of you. Lynda Miller, Vice President of Avalon Engineering, representing the property owners. Just like to thank Patrick for his presentation tonight. I do have a PowerPoint, I just want to go through a couple of slides. So this particular slide shows other blocks within this area that have had a vacation of the alley. So the parcel to the south of the site, and then also south of Veterans Parkway. The required depth of the parcel is required so that you can actually develop a commercial site, and that happened for the Outback, which is under construction right now, and all of the fast food and service areas that have developed south of Veterans Parkway. Patrick mentioned that we are having a site plan reviewed currently. It is for a retail store, 4,716 square feet, and with all the facilities that are necessary to utilize the alley to the north. And my last slide is, you know, this vacation of plat was submitted according to the-- And my last slide is, you know, this vacation of plat was submitted according to the city plan requirement. The application is consistent with policy 1.15 and 3.6 of the future land use element of the city's comprehensive plan, and we agree with the staff report and the staff's 10 conditions. We request your approval.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on resolution 321-23? Seeing none, public hearings now closed. Is there a motion to approve resolution 321-23?
Motion to approve.
Second. Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Thank you, and happy holiday.
I'm sorry.
Mr. City Attorney, do we need to modify the motion? I know it's already passed. With the conditions as proposed, or is that part of the motion that was made?
It'd be part of the motion that was made.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to resolution 324-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 324-23, a resolution providing for the vacation of plat for platted easements lying in lots 21 through 26 and lots 57 through 62, block 3169, Cape Coral, Unit 66. Property located at 2610 Southwest Eighth Place, providing an effective date.
Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. As stated previously, in regards to this specific quasi judicial hearing, if there's any ex parte communications, this will be the opportune time for the discussion to occur.
Thank you. Any council members have any ex parte communications to report? Seeing none, this is a quasi judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth? I do. Thank you.
Turn it over to staff.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. For the record, Candace Ford, Associate Planner with the City Planning Division. The property owners for this project are going to be KWAL Investments LLC and JDMNC Investments LLC. The authorized representative Veronica Martin with TDM Consulting. The location is going to be 2610 Southwest Eighth Place, and the proposed vacation request is going to be for 2,736.03 square feet of platted easements in lots 21 through 26 and lots 57 through 62 of block 3169, Unit 66. So this is a general location within the city, and then the red rectangle that you see there is the proposed vacation request. The zoning for the parcels adjacent on either side are going to be commercial, as is quite a bit of the parcels nearby. A little bit of background about the site. It is currently 1.3 acres, 1.38 acres, pardon me, and it does consist of about 12 lots that were recently combined in 2022. However, when it was combined, it did not negate the platted easement, so that's what the request is for this evening. The site does have double frontage between Southwest Eighth Street and Southwest Eighth Place, and it is currently about less than 200 feet south of the Home Depot store. The parcel was rezoned from single-family residential, which would be the R1 zoning, to commercial, see pursuant to ordinance 2611, with the future land use classification being revised from single-family to commercial slash professional pursuant to ordinance 11-08. As criteria mentioned in the LDC section 3.4.5, since it is proposed, since the vacation request is within the middle of the newly combined parcel, it's not going to be used for transportation, access, water management, or utility functions. We don't really foresee any of those. The site will have a six-foot wide perimeter easement as required around the entire site, and all three utility providers did say they had no objection. However, it should be noted that CenturyLink, AKA Lumen, will require the applicant to pay for the relocation of current existing facilities to the proposed perimeter easement of the site. It should also be noted that this project is consistent with comprehensive plan. It does show that commercial zoning is consistent with the future land use classification of commercial slash professional. Recommendation, staff does recommend conditions of approval for the vacation, and the hearing examiner also recommended approval with conditions, and the case was heard October 17th of 2023. Correspondence, before HECS, I did not receive any calls or emails regarding the site. However, within the past two days, I have had two people call, just asking, inquiring what this vacation request was for. They were neither for or against the request. And I will stand by for any questions.
Thank you. I now open public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on resolution 324-23, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve resolution 324-23?
Motion to approve.
Second. Council members, thank you.
Thank you. Is there, has the applicant acknowledged their requirement to pay for the relocation of CenturyLink slash Lumen?
Yes, they have. They have confirmed that they are willing to relocate, and they will pay for the relocation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion. Second on the floor, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Six ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item 10B is legislative public hearings. We have resolution 341-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 341-23, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Cape Coral, Florida, electing to use the uniform method of collecting non-ad valorem special assessments levied within certain portions of the incorporated area of the city described herein, stating a need for such levy, providing for the mailing of this resolution, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Mason, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Mark Mason, Financial Services Director. Before you tonight is resolution 341-23. It's an annual notice of intent resolution that's required by statute in order to allow us, if we have any assessments that we're going to levy in the next year. So in this case, we've been utilizing this, I don't know what that was, hold on a minute. So it's a billing method whereby we place an annual assessment on a tax bill. We have a number of these that we'll talk about here shortly. We've been using this method since 2002. Local governments must adopt this resolution annually, or at least prior to the next calendar year, in order to be able to use this methodology for any new assessments. The government must also advertise it for four straight weeks, which we've done, and in order to have this resolution before the city council. This does provide the intent of notification to the property appraiser and the tax collector that we may place an assessment on the tax rolls. The adoption of the resolution does not obligate the city for doing this, it just simply allows for it to happen. We currently utilize the method for all of our current assessment areas, from Southwest Two through North One West. We also use it for this residential solid waste, stormwater, fire service assessment, any impact fee and CAC loans that are taken out by residents in the past vacant lot mowing, as well as the Del Prado Mall parking lot. Some of the items that are also included in this notice, non-ad valorem assessment, are the notice of intent. We have improvements or any maintenance of roads, roadway medians, right-of-ways, potential street lighting maintenance and improvement, district, utility infill, areas, capital facility expansion charges, et cetera. And that's it. I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. I now open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on resolution 341-23, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve resolution 341-23?
Motion to approve.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to ordinance 75-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 75-23, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral, Florida Land Development Code, Article 5, Development Standards, Chapter 5, Landscaping, by amending Section 5.5.1.3, landscaping for all development other than single-family detached dwellings and duplexes, regarding reductions to the total tree planting requirement, and by creating Section 5.5.1.9, Tree Funds, regarding the establishment of tree funds, providing severability and an effective date.
Turn it over to staff.
Good afternoon. Give me one second. Try and. Good afternoon, Council, Omar Leon, City Arborist. Before you today, we have proposed amendments to Land Development Code to incorporate the city's tree trust fund into the landscape development code. Cities typically adopts trust funds to help with the future development of sites, to allow for proper establishment of tree canopy, and to allow for proper preservation of existing trees as we move forward with future developments. The proposed amendments would require that reductions exceeding 25% on city parks have a recommendation from the city parks director. In addition to approval from the development services director, this is based on some middle of proper documentation, explaining, with the narrative explaining why such recommendation is being made. Within areas outside of the parks and South Cape District, commercial developments can ask for a reduction of up to 15% without any additional city approval needed. Reductions between 16 and 30% will require the submission of proper documentations for review and approval from the development services director. Within the South Cape District, due to it being in the urban core of the city, reductions of up to 100% can be requested. Once again, approval needs to be submitted to the development services director for review and approval to move forward. In instances where development are approved for these reductions, the mitigation shortfall shall be addressed through contributions to the tree fund. The tree fund would then be utilized for the planning, planting, establishment, and preservation of trees on public land, for the planning and management of an urban forest, of urban forest, reforestation, and other auxiliary causes associated with the planting, establishment, and preservation of trees. Approved reductions would then allow for the approval of proper species selection when developing sites, improve landscape aesthetics in our commercial sites, and also reduce long-term maintenance due to improper landscape design. It will also allow us to shift tree canopy coverage to more usable areas, such as our city parks, green spaces, medians, and streetscapes. Lastly, the tree fund would be a vital role, will play a vital role in the development of an urban forestry program within the city, which will guide future development, planning, preservation, and management of a sustainable urban tree canopy citywide. And with that, I'll stay here for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. I now open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 75-23, please come forward.
I have a question. I'm smoking, Joe. Have you already decided who's going to get to replace the trees? That's what I've heard. Is that the case? We already know who's going to do the tree replacement? Is it not a conflict of interest? From my information, you guys already made a decision. So, keep that in your hat. You know I know, and you know I know.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, public hearings now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 75-23?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Six ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to resolution 305-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 305-23, a resolution of the City of Cape Coral, Florida, establishing the tree contribution amounts for the general tree fund and the South Cape tree fund when mitigating reductions to tree planting requirements, providing an effective date.
Thank you. Turn it back over to staff.
Thank you. So this subsequent resolution is accompanying the adopted tree fund, which adopts the fees for the tree fund contributions. Within, let me make this larger, I'm sorry. Staff is recommending that within the South Cape District per resolution, sorry, other areas other than the South Cape District per the resolution, a fee be imposed of $1,400 per tree for the tree trust fund contribution. This cost would associate, would include the cost of the plant material, installation, staking, mulching, fertilization, watering, and the warranty and structure pruning needed to establish a proper tree canopy within our city. Within the South Cape District, due to the site conditions that exist in that area, which is our urban core, in addition to those costs, there's also the requirement for establishing, to establish infrastructure to allow for proper soil volume requirements, so that we have healthy tree canopy cover, growth in that area. In addition, in the South Cape District, there are, there's a requirement for a larger tree to be planted for mitigation requirements, as opposed to areas outside the South Cape District. City staff is recommending that in areas of the South Cape District, the tree fund contribution be established at $2,500 per tree. And I open that for any questions you guys may have.
Thank you. I now open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this particular resolution, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any council discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to ordinance 98-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 98-23, an ordinance providing for the release of a permanent drainage easement in a portion of Lot 95, block 910, and a portion of Lot 1, block 879, Cape Coral, Unit 26, authorizing the mayor to execute a release of said easement, property located at 2807 Santa Barbara Boulevard, providing severability and an effective date.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to staff. Good evening, Ms. Andrews.
Good evening, Mayor. City council members, Dawn Andrews with the Public Works Property Management Division. Ordinance 98-23 is requesting the release of a permanent drainage easement within a portion of property located at 2807 Santa Barbara Boulevard. In September 2016, the city council adopted resolution 105-16, vacating a portion of the Mass Canal right-of-way, as well as a public utility, as well as public utility and drainage easements within the parcel. Resolution 105-16 provided for the former property owner to grant the city a drainage easement across the property, which they did do. The property has since changed ownership, and the current owner has requested the city release and terminate its interest in the 2016 easement. The current owner is requesting the release as they have installed the drainage pipe in a different location of the site due to their current construction plans. The current owner has granted the city a new drainage easement in the location of the newly installed drainage pipe. And I think I can put this on the overhead. So the parcel's located on the east side of Santa Barbara Boulevard, south of Veterans Parkway. It sits at the end of the Mass Canal. This is Kamal, of Mass Canal. This is Kamal Parkway, just to its northern border. So the original easement was down the middle of the site, right into the middle of the canal. The new easement is located to the south of that and goes through the property and into the canal in a different location. into the canal in a different location. At tonight's meeting, the current property owner did grant the city a new drainage easement in this location, and the city has determined that the original easement down the middle of the canal is no longer necessary and agrees for its release. I'll stand by for questions.
Thank you. I now open up a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 98-23, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 98-23?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any council discussion? For long?
My only comment, or I guess rather inquiry, is this the site that there was some significant public interest in regarding the use that was going to be on that property? And some conversations back and forth with the Army Corps of Engineers related to a car wash?
Yes, sir.
For that reason alone, and that's in District 4? Do we know whether that happens to be in District 4?
Yes, it is in District 4.
Would be my desire to continue this until whoever fills that seat in District 4 can be able to make a decision on that. But that would just be my opinion. I would suggest that we continue that. I know there's a motion on the table, but I will be voting no, and that's the reason. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Steinke?
Just a structural question. The original drainage was straightaway. It appears that the new drainage will require an elbow?
Yes.
And just as those, if you will, pipes are put in, is there a cleanout that's placed at where that angle occurs for future use if there's blockage?
So Linda Miller with Avalon is here. In the, in the original easement, there was no pipe ever placed in it, and so with the new construction plans, they've installed the pipe.
Hi, Linda Miller, Vice President of Avalon Engineering, representing the property owner. We've gone through site plan approval for the construction of the Tommy Car Wash. We also have gone through all of the required Army Corps permitting. We have filled in the canal. The pipe is necessary because it drains the roadway. It's a city stormwater pipe. It drains from the roadway into the canal system. It's really not part of our stormwater, it's the city stormwater. And so the relocation of the pipe was necessary. And we've also upgraded that pipe and enlarged that pipe.
Mike, the question that I had was, is that is there some mechanism by which that right angle that it now will have to take can get cleaned out if in fact there's a blockage there?
I truly don't know if we have a cleanout there. We probably do, but I can't tell you yes or no on that. Can email that to you tomorrow, but I don't have it with me tonight.
I think there's an answer.
Let's hear it, ma'am.
Yes, when these plans come through our site plan review process, we have engineers that will look at this. Typically, what they do is they put a junction box with a solid lid. If it's not a great top that will take flow, and it's just a conveyance at that section, intersection, there would be a junction box for that, and that junction box would serve at a cleanout, so that the distance and any clogs could be cleaned.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember?
Mike, refresh my memory. How much of that canal did we end up filling in?
It's just shy of two lots worth back, so about 150 feet. I'm looking at the actual sketch and description, and it's just shy of, so it's lots 90 and lots 91 on one side, so it's about 160 feet on one side, and then on the other side, it's a little bit shorter.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other discussion, is there a motion? Motion and a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
No.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinkie.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
That's six ayes, one nay, motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item 10C introductions, Resolution 336-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Resolution 336-23, a resolution providing for the vacation of plat for a portion of the Bay Point Canal right-of-way, adjacent to lots 16 and 17, Block 158, Cape Coral, Unit 4, Part 2, providing for the vacation of plat for platted easements associated with lots 16 and 17, Block 158, Cape Coral, Unit 4, Part 2, property located at 5336 Bayview Court, providing an effective date. The public hearing will be January 10, 2024.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, move on to Resolution 339-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Resolution 339-23, a resolution providing for the vacation of plat for a portion of the Lincoln Canal right-of-way, adjacent to lots 5 and 6, Block 10, Cape Coral, Unit 1, Part 2, providing for the vacation of plat for platted easements associated with lots 5 and 6, Block 10, Cape Coral, Unit 1, Part 2, property located at 1110 Lorraine Court, providing an effective date. The public hearing will be January 10, 2024.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance 99-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 99-23, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral, Florida, official zoning district map of all property within the limits of the City of Cape Coral by rezoning property described as lots 10 through 11, Block 1155, Cape Coral, Unit 23, from professional office to residential multifamily low zone. Property is located at 711 Cultural Park Boulevard South, providing for severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be January 10, 2024.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance 100-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 100-23, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral, Florida, official zoning district map of all property within the limits of the City of Cape Coral by rezoning property described as Lot 49, Block 4380, lots 1 through 18, Block 4381, and lots 25 through 29, Block 4382, Unit 63, Cape Coral subdivision, from professional office to single-family residential zone. Property is located at 2222 through 2314 Southwest 8th Place, 812, 818, and 819, Southwest 24th Street, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be January 10, 2024.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance 101-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 101-23, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cape Coral, Florida, approving contract amendment number three of contract number RFP PW1015/PB between the City of Cape Coral, Florida and Waste Pro of Florida, Inc., authorizing the city manager or their designee to execute contract amendment number three, providing for severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be January 10, 2024.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 11, his new business. 11A is filling the District 4 vacancy council member seat. Before we get started, each of the candidates will have an opportunity for three minutes for an opening statement. At the end of that opening statement, each council member will have the opportunity, but not compelled to do so, to ask one question from each candidate. At this time, I would like to ask each candidate to meet staff outside of the council chambers. You will be sequestered during this process. You will be called back into the council chambers in alphabetical order. And at this time, I would like to have a 12-minute recess until 7:00 PM.
I'd like to call the meeting back to order. We're on item 11, new business filling the District Four Councilmember vacancy. Again, we are going to take the candidates in alphabetical order. They will have a three-minute opportunity for an opening statement. Each council member will have the opportunity to ask one question if he or she desires to do so. The candidate will have one minute for a response, and then we will move on to the next candidate. Now, once the candidate has went through the process, is council okay with them sitting here in the council chambers since they've already been through that process? Or do we want to have them go back over until everybody has had the opportunity? I'll leave that open to council.
Yeah, having gone through that process, I don't see any issue with having them here after they've already.
Yep, I'm good with that, too. Okay. All right. Madam City Clerk, call your first candidate.
Richard Carr.
Which podium mayor is it better?
Whichever one.
This one's got better. That's good or bad. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, city staff, city residents, both here and on television that are watching live. My name is Richard Carr. I stand before you with great pride and enthusiasm as a candidate for appointment for the City Council, District Four. I'm a dedicated 30-year resident of Cape Coral, and my journey in public service has been an integral part of my life and my identity. I'm a proud husband and father of two adult children, and my dedication to them mirrors my dedication to this community. Throughout most of my adult life, I've committed myself to public service, and my educational background with a bachelor's degree in public administration has provided me with a solid foundation for civic leadership. My professional journey includes significant roles, such as the Director of Professional Standards at the School District of Lee County, as the manager of the Code Compliance Division here in the City of Cape Coral, as an Assistant Police Chief in City of Naples, and a long tenure with the City of Fort Myers Police Department where I served in various roles and assignments as I rose through the ranks to the rank of captain. My other educational pursuits have included completion of a chief executive seminar at the Florida Criminal Justice Executive Institute, and over 1,000 hours of other advanced specialized training throughout my career. I'm also a proud graduate of the FBI National Academy, Session 248 in Quantico, Virginia. This underscores my dedication to continuous learning and leadership development. In my current role as a Realtor, I continue to contribute to the growth of our community, focusing on residential sales and investment. I'd like to also say, I'm not just a candidate, I'm a community member deeply invested in the well-being and progress of Cape Coral. My desire, drive, dedication, professionalism, and leadership skills are at your service. I look forward to the opportunity to contribute to my skills and passion to the City Council, working together for the betterment of our community. Thank you, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you, and Madam City Clerk will ask her questions in the same order or roll call is tonight.
Hayden.
Richard, thanks for applying. My question is, I believe that one of the main missions of the council is to plan the city's future over the next 20 to 30 years. If appointed, what do you believe is the one issue that would help us reach that goal?
I think well-planned growth is important. We also need to provide, I mean, it's difficult to provide everything to everyone, but that should be our goal. Citizen input is clearly important. We saw that this evening. People's emotions can get very high, and it's important that we allow opportunity, as we did this evening, to let them be heard. So I think a collaborative effort, a team approach, community input, moving us forward is the best way to go.
Thank you.
Long.
No question.
Shepherd.
No question.
Steinke.
Richard, thank you for coming this evening, placing an application, and putting yourself at the mercy of the council, and thank you for all your past service in all the various roles. My question for all of us here and those watching at home would be, everyone has witnessed how controversial and emotionally charged a lot of the decisions are that need to be made here. Could you share with us what you would consider be one of the most controversial decisions that you've been involved with in the past, and how you made your decision on how to go, and what came as a result of your decision?
You know, over the course of my 30 years of government service, 25 of which was in law enforcement, I made decisions like that all the time, on a small and large scale. I'll use an example that I used with you in our meeting. There were times where I worked at a lot of the undercover drug investigations over my career, and when I was in charge of one of the divisions, we had cases where we tried to close businesses due to overt drug activity in their parking lots. One of those locations was a local grocery store, and one of the outcomes was that we were trying to close the place, and we saw that there were citizens that were negatively affected by that closure, that honestly, we really didn't anticipate the level of impact to the community at that time. And I had a takeaway from that, that it was important to look at all sides of an issue before taking final action. It was still the right decision to be made. We did move forward with closure of that facility. It was temporary in the eyes of the law, but it did mitigate the main issue, which was public safety and drug sales within the, on the property.
Thank you.
But that was one of the issues that I had.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about the one minute, I forgot about that.
Welsh.
Thank you, and thank you for applying. My question is, knowing that this is an appointment, and then having to potentially run for the seat again, what do you expect to accomplish in the short 11 months being on council? What, if anything, do you expect to accomplish?
I hope to accomplish by running into this job headfirst, hitting the ground running, so to speak, because of my background and experience, I think I can do that. Actually, I know I can do that. Using the 11 months to do two things: learn this job as best I can, gain the confidence of the community that I work with on a regular basis and represent, and also win their vote. If given this appointment, I do intend to run in the election for the seat for the next term. Thank you.
Cosden.
All my questions were answered in my interviews, so I don't have a question.
Gunter.
Yep, myself as well. You know, we had anywhere from 30 minutes to an hour with each candidate. I've had my, all of my questions answered. I want to thank you, you know, for applying and your willingness to step up to the plate, and I appreciate, you know, your desire to do that. With that being said, I'm the last member on council, so I'd invite you to take a seat and see how the rest of the process works through.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have called for the next applicant to come down. Teresa Frisone.
Hi, my name is Teresa Frisone. I live off of Santa Barbara in District Four for 11 and a half, 12 years. I applied for this position when it was vacated because I felt my experience, I'd be up and ready to run right away. After seeing this meeting today, I'm not sure I still want it. I was embarrassed. I have run council meetings over 200 times, never once did I have to have anyone arrested, never once did I have to bang my gavel to tell people to stop cheering. It's just, you can't treat people that way, that's terrible. And I'm pretty sure you won't pick me, so, thanks.
Thank you. Next candidate.
We have called for the next candidate to come down.
Thank you.
Eduardo Jimenez.
Good evening, Madam City Clerk, if you could put the three minutes back. Go ahead, sorry, this is your three minutes for your opening statement.
Hi, good evening, Fox. It's a pleasure to meeting with you guys yesterday and today, and my name is Eduardo Jimenez. I came from Cuba in 2002, and I moved to here, to Cape Coral in 2005. So I'm a business owner. I've got my family here with me, too. I raised my kid here in Cape Coral, so I want to help the city of Cape Coral to grow more, and, so, and, I mean, service for our community. I've got a business in Pan Island Row. I'm doing kitchen countertops, cabinet, and selling tile. And one of my first things as hell was save the school and the kids have better safety. And, I'm sorry. You know, that's, that's what I wanted to, I mean, help with everything in the city in Cape Coral and growing up. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk.
Hayden.
Eduardo, thank you for applying. My question to you is, I believe one of the main issues and missions of this council is to plan the city's future over the next 20 or 30 years. If appointed, what do you believe is the one issue that would help us reach that goal?
One of them is development, you know, to help, was to straighten the city, the traffic. That's one of them.
Okay, if that's all you have to say, that's fine.
Okay.
Long.
No question, thank you.
Shepherd.
No questions.
Steinke.
Thank you, Eduardo, for applying and wanting to step up to the plate and help our city move forward. What would you say, over your course of time, has the most, been the most controversial issue that you've been involved with and had to help make a decision or make a decision on your own? How did you make that decision, and what came as a result of the decision that you made?
I mean, I'm always trying to do the best. When I have any conflict, trying to help the people and give you the best answer. And, you know, to see that everything goes through easy, no arguments, that's what I...
Okay, thank you.
Welsh.
Thank you. Knowing that this appointment is potentially only for 11 months, is there anything that you feel that you can accomplish during that time before you'll have to rerun again?
One of the conflicts that I'm seeing is nobody, hell, I mean, nobody know how about that. I'm seeing the community, the Hispanic community, they need help, and we need somebody to represent the Hispanic community, too. It's like 20, 22% of the Latinos here, and I want to see if we can, I can bridge that gap to help the Hispanic community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Your Honor, do you want me to continue calling the names that have expressed that they do not have a question today?
I mean, I'm not going to ask any, any questions. Are you asking any questions?
I have that for Long, Shepherd, Cosden, and Gunter. Okay, so I won't call those names.
Thank you.
All right, so we have called the next applicant. They should be here any moment.
And just thank you for applying. Have a seat.
Thank you.
And you can watch the process, and we'll have the vote at the end.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Robert Michael Looby.
Hello, my name is Robert Michael Looby. I live in District Four. My main background is medical. And I also taught school, high school, ninth graders. And, let's see. I've done a lot of different jobs growing up. I've lived here since I was about 11 years old. I've moved away several times for jobs and for college. I went to Edison Community College, and I went to Barry University in Miami, Miami Shores. Graduated with a cardiovascular perfusion, human health services degree. Got a pre-med from Edison prior to that. Let's see. I don't know what exactly all entails of the commissioner, but I've listened to everybody that's been a commissioner. And my friend's a commissioner in Fort Myers. And I said, "Well, if nobody's going to run for the job, I guess I can do it." I mean... So that's how I got here. Is there any other questions you would like to ask or something?
There's a few council members that have questions.
Okay.
Hayden.
Robert, thanks for applying. My question to you is, I believe, one of the main missions of the council is to plan the city's future for the next 20 or 30 years. If appointed, what do you believe is the one issue that would help us reach that goal and why?
Well, I think the main thing I want to advocate for is medical and also exercising. I would like to see track and possibly new pools. Put in Olympic-sized pools for the future. And I think that would bring us closer to the future.
Thank you.
Steinke.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you for being here tonight. And thank you for applying and stepping up to the plate to look to help our city. My question is, in all of your past, what would you consider to be the most controversial issue that you've ever been involved with yourself, where you had to take part in or make a decision about that controversial issue? How did you make that determination and what came as a result of the determination you made?
Well, I think we went over this. It was when I was in St. Tammany Parish. I was on call, and they called me in for an emergency heart. And I had to go in, and I didn't know who the patient was. We performed the heart surgery. Patient did okay coming off. And then he started crashing. It wasn't his heart. And so we put him on an ECMO machine, which is a different between, from the heart-lung machine. It helps function the kidneys and push blood through instead of just oxygenating and everything. And it's actually letting the patient's own thing start working. Well, it started working fine first four days. And then I had to keep balancing the blood, platelets, and plasma to keep his pressures right. And to keep his...
Thank you. Yeah, one minute.
Well, he was my great uncle.
Welsh.
He ended up dying. That was the toughest part.
Thank you for applying.
He was alive for seven days.
My question is, knowing that this appointment's only going to be for 11 months, and then you're going to have to either potentially step down, pending everything else, is there anything that you want to accomplish in the short appointment of the 11 months? Anything that you plan on?
I would like to see a professional track or pools. Again, I also would like to look towards the future of all, you know, everything that you guys are talking about right now. It's about planning for parks and things that interest me.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You can have a seat. And we will have a discussion and a vote at the end of the interviews of all the candidates.
William Matthews.
Good evening, everyone. My name is William Matthews. Saying again, good evening to mayor, council, Mr. City Manager. We haven't met yet, but I'm looking forward to speaking with you if things should move forward with my appointment. It was a pleasure speaking with you all this weekend, through this week. And I'd like to thank taking the time out of your busy schedule to do your due diligence and speaking with everybody that is considering the appointment for this position. For those of you that haven't met me, my name is William Matthews. Here tonight for the District Four appointment. My decision to enter into this endeavor was not an easy one. This is not an opportunity to leave a current position for because you're unhappy with your current position. It's also not a role that you just decide you want to get into. It's a life-changing decision because the decisions you're going to make are going to impact a lot of other people. This decision will not just impact some random people that you just don't know or some random people that are over here or over there. It will, however, impact your neighbor, your child's best friend, their parents, even your coworkers. This past weekend was particularly nerve-wracking because I really didn't know how to prepare for this interview merry-go-round that was about to take place this week. This is not your standard interview process, nor is it a standard position to apply for. But after meeting with the mayor and the rest of the council, I couldn't be more excited that I decided to eventually want to have this appointment. I ended up not having seven intense interviews that I originally thought I was going to have. But rather, I had seven great conversations, and I wish every resident could have the same experience that I did. Having said that, it would be a privilege working beside these seven individuals to help shape the future of Cape Coral. There's a lot of work to be done, and I believe I can take the responsibilities of this role. And I believe my education and experience in the finance industry and my experience as a litigation and real estate paralegal in New York City have prepared me to make well-rounded decisions and can provide assistance or be a resource to the council when helping to ensure the future of Cape Coral stays on the right path. I would like to reiterate to the council members that I do understand the pressures, the limitations, and the lack of resources that come along with the position, and I'm fully prepared to accept them if you do decide to make me a part of your team. I also appreciate the time that you took to, appreciate the time that we had to speak because of the limitations on sunshine that will impose our conversations if I should be appointed. Before I leave, I would like to thank Kimberly Brown, the city clerk, Connie, Lisa.
Thank you. That's your three minutes, sir. Thank you.
Thanks just for everybody, you know, in the process.
Hayden.
William, thank you for applying. Appreciate it. I believe one of the main missions of this council is to plan the city's future over the next 20 to 30 years. If appointed, what do you believe is the one issue that would help us reach that goal and why?
Our issue that we're always going to face is growth. So we need to prepare 15, 20, 30 years down the line. I mean, preparing for my children to be able to access anything they possibly can. And right now, with infrastructure and water, you know, the way that is a big detriment to us. And we can't function if we're not keeping up with that. So we need to prepare much further down the line to make sure we can sustain the growth that is coming because it's not going to stop growing. So we have to be ready and prepared for that.
Thank you.
Steinke.
Thank you. Thank you, William, for applying and for wanting to step up and help our city move forward. Reflecting back on your past experience, could you share with us here and those watching from home what you believe to be the most controversial issue you've ever been involved with and had to make a decision? How you made that decision and what came as a result of it?
There hasn't been one sole controversy that I've dealt with. The biggest issue that comes with any controversy is everybody might not understand what happened, and that's why there's a controversy. As we saw tonight, there is a lot of pushback on things. And it's basically taking the time to figure out why everybody's either upset or why they don't understand what's going on. So I like to be a person that wants to be transparent and have an open-door policy to make sure everybody understands what's going on. And with that, that kind of de-escalates any problem that can come before me or de-escalate any kind of problem that I could face later on.
Okay, thank you.
Welsh.
Thank you. Knowing that this appointment is only for 11 months and then you'll have to run again, what, if anything, do you expect to accomplish in that short period of time?
For me, it's just moving forward what is necessary now. I can't really plan to improve something in 11 months when I don't know what could possibly be more important at that time. So me trying to come in to implement any kind of, anything that's new is going to halt anything that is current, that is present, that is going on right now. So for me, it's looking at what is necessary now and just keep pushing that agenda forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate you applying and your willingness to step up to serve. Please, you can have a seat and watch the rest of the interviews. And of course, we'll have a discussion and a vote at the end.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council.
Jennifer Nelson.
Hey, mayor, hey, council. How's it going? Jennifer Nelson, 15-year resident in Cape Coral, 10-year resident in District Four. I think, for those of you that don't know my background, most of my career has been in nonprofit work. I do a lot of fundraising and work with different nonprofits and events. And I have been a former council member, as many of you know. Elected in 2017, served until 2022. In those five years, we had cleanup, finished cleanup from Irma. We had a water crisis in 2018. We had a death. We had, one, two, three, four appointments. And then, of course, the pandemic. And then, of course, most recently, Ian. So I'm pretty proud of the work that I did with a lot of you up there. I think that we accomplished a lot. I know that after the 2018 water crisis, I championed assisting with the fertilizer ordinance to strengthen it. And definitely, with all of the Ian recovery, was able to mobilize nonprofits into our city to be able to offer services and goods to our residents who needed them. Spent a lot of time on the Red Cross truck, feeding people in our hardest-hit areas. Do you have any questions?
Hayden.
We do. Jennifer, thanks. Thanks for applying.
Of course.
I believe that one of the main missions of the council is to plan the city's future over the next 20 to 30 years. If appointed, what do you believe is the one issue that would help us reach that goal and why?
Help us re...
Reach that goal and why?
Oh, gosh. A lot of things. I think we need to finish a lot of projects, namely, the parks. We still have areas of our city that don't have sidewalks. And I'm really tired of hearing from our younger generation that there's nothing to do in our city. So we need to keep that in mind, with the long game in mind, as I've always said in the past, to be able to look at those future generations. Our demographics are getting a lot younger in our city. We have a lot of young families moving in and purchasing homes here. And we need to really look at, you know, what is our city going to look like? And what is it going to look like, not just for those of us that are here today, but our future generations? I mean, those folks that have small kids. We need, I mean, look at Fort Myers Beach. Look at how great all of that redevelopment is going to be. Look at downtown Fort Myers. I mean, they have an amphitheater right there in the middle of the city. It would be so great for us to take that old golf course. I know I'm touting for District Four and do something really great with that.
Thank you.
Steinke.
Thank you. And thank you, Jennifer, for continuing to want to serve our city. In your past, be it on council or other positions in life, what would you say has been the most controversial issue that you have had to be involved with to help assist or make a decision yourself? How did you make the decision and what came as a result of it?
I think there's probably many answers to that. I think probably the first most controversial issue that I dealt with as a council member was our water issue in 2018. We had a lot of businesses on water. We had a lot of people who weren't coming here to our city. It crushed our economics. Our business owners were crying out, not only here in our city, but also in the whole county. And I think that was a very difficult issue. We had a lot of residents who were angry about the algae in their canals. We were trying to come up with solutions as quickly as possible, and that was a challenge because, you know, the information was always moving. It was always changing. You know, we have Sinobacteria. We don't have Sinobacteria. We need to put fans in. Most recently, we tried bubble curtains, I think, a year or two ago. And so I think that was a very controversial issue. That was the first one that I dealt with as a councilperson. Being able to balance, you know, what we were going to do for our residents and what we were going to do for our businesses.
Thank you.
Welsh.
Thank you. Knowing that this is just an appointment, and in 11 months, whoever is appointed might potentially have to run for the seat, what, if anything, do you expect to accomplish in this appointment role?
Well, I think probably the first thing would be to restore some faith in our residents. I know that I've spoken with several of you about the incident that occurred with this seat. How are we going to put measures in place so that we're not in this situation again? I would also say that the parks are a big deal. Finishing the parks, being able to continue moving forward with some of the decisions that this council has made regarding the Yacht Club, as well as J.C. Park. And being able to really support that. And again, look at the long game with the younger family and younger demographics that are continuing to move here.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the interview. Thank you for applying. We ask you to please take a seat.
Thank you, mayor.
Bob O'Connor.
Hello, council members and Mayor Gunter. My name is Bob O'Connor, and I've been a resident of Cape Coral since 1974. Other than living abroad for two years while serving in the United States Army, Cape Coral has been home to me for almost 50 years. My wife, Taryn, and I have raised our two adult sons, Bobby and Brian, here in the Cape. The people, friends, family, plus the way of life, keep us here in Cape Coral like a magnet. I would like to address the citizens of Cape Coral and particularly those who live in District Four. Due to the circumstances of this appointment, our faith and trust was breached. It's crucial that our city council operates with integrity and in the best interests of the residents. What can I do to restore that faith? If appointed, I would pledge community engagement and, most importantly, to intently listen to you. Every resident in the district deserves to be heard. I will hold quarterly forums for your input, suggestions, and criticisms. Collaboration and feedback from those forums will be the basis for processing my decisions going forward. Being accountable and transparent, hopefully over time, will restore your trust. Mayor and Council, if appointed, know that I have the enthusiasm and commitment to serve as an effective member of this council. Living here for almost 50 years, I know the city and I know the residents. My experience with the city, having served five years on planning and zoning and one year on Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, warrant consideration for this job. I pledge to work towards building a consensus and common ground. Everybody has their own beliefs and values, but it's also important to recognize when compromise is necessary. I would be here to learn from you and work collectively with all of you. I am confident that my background makes me well-qualified to serve as a city council member. Thank you.
Hayden?
Bob, thank you for applying. My question to you is, I believe that one of the main missions of council is to plan the city's future over the next 20 to 30 years. If appointed, what do you believe is the one issue that would help us reach that goal?
If appointed, probably trying to speed up the utilities process, if at all possible. I believe the last date to be finished with the installation of these utilities is 2045, and I would try to work to find a way to get that done sooner.
Okay, thank you.
Steinke?
Thank you, Bob. Thank you for applying and stepping up to help move our city forward. As you look back on your years in all the positions that you've held, what would you consider to be the most controversial issue you've ever been involved with that you've had to participate in or make a decision on? How did you make that decision and what came as a result of it?
So, being on planning and zoning, I'm also a commercial real estate advisor. And at the time I was on planning and zoning, the city had done studies basically saying that we needed to produce 1,500 multifamily units a year for the next five years. That was in 2016. I was on council, or I'm sorry, planning from 2018 till March of this year. So, you know, if I would vote for a property to be rezoned to multifamily, I was doing that on the direction of the city for more multifamily units. So that could come across maybe as, you know, either conflict of interest, but I was just doing what the study told me to do.
Thank you.
And I did it.
Welsh?
Thank you. If you were to be appointed, knowing that this position is only for 11 months, what, if anything, do you expect to accomplish?
Again, I would hopefully get caught up to speed as quickly as humanly possible, reaching out to each member here for help to get me caught up to what I need to do. You know, 11 months' time, short-term issues, you know, that need to be resolved. I will research them and, you know, vote accordingly to what I do my research on.
Thank you. That's all the questions. Thank you for applying, and we welcome you to have a seat to hear the rest of the interviews, and we'll have a discussion and a vote at the end.
Thank you.
David Orlowski?
Good evening.
Good, sir. You have three minutes for an opening statement.
Okay. Well, I identified Cape Coral about 28 years ago when my parents were looking to relocate from Florida, from New Jersey to Florida. And one of the reasons why I pointed my parents in the right direction here was because I thought that we had a lot of opportunity, and at the same time, I could watch a community grow. I have seen some, the good, the bad, and the ugly. Most importantly, I've established businesses here, employed a tremendous amount of people, which I currently do. And I eventually met my wife. So I've had a lot of good things that have happened to me over the years living in Cape Coral. And ultimately, the reason why I wanted to throw my hat in the ring, so to speak, for this particular position is because I've been in a leadership position majority of my career, whether that was owning my own business or being a consultant to Fortune 500 companies and advising senior leadership on some of the internal problems they have. But most importantly, planning for the future. And a big piece of this job, which a lot of people don't realize, is we're not planning for tomorrow. We're planning for five, 10, 15, 20 years from now. And I think that's an important, whoever the candidate may be that you select, is a very important piece of what's going to happen for the future. And, you know, along with that comes a lot of criticism. Sometimes, as we saw tonight, you know, gentlemen was removed. Another person was removed. But at the end of the day, we all want what's best for the community. At the end of the day, it's, you have, when you're in a position as a council member or mayor or anybody in the city, we have to make sure that we are looking out for the future, our kids, our children, and most importantly, what's going to happen for the next generation. And I think that I have the ability to do that. I've done it in the past. I've done it for major corporations where I've saved people's jobs. And I was also able to add job security and value to some of the companies I've consulted for and even on a personal level. That's my statement.
Thank you. We have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Hayden?
Yes.
David, thank you for applying, and you were approaching on my question and your answer there. If you were appointed and were planning the city's future for the next 20 or 30 years, what's the one issue that would help us reach that goal and why?
Well, you know, there's a few different issues that we have to look at right now. We can talk about J.C. Park. We can talk about the Yacht Club. We can talk about a few things. But one of the things that really strikes, really that's scary, is actually the Northwest. Northwest has a tremendous problem with water at this time. And with growth and building, how long is that going to last? Are people going to be able to have running water in their homes? Is there something that we need to do now? I mean, the people may not like the cost of it, but what's the cost going to be in five, 10, 15, 20 years from now? And there's a few different things that will work in their best interest. There are roads that need to be paved out there that, along with the city project and expanding out there, will get paved in a timely manner. They will also have more infrastructure improvements. So that's just something just off the top of my head that, you know, I think there's an immediate need to do something with it. You know, we have to plan, we have to start planning for the future of that area.
Thank you.
Steinke?
Thank you, and David, thank you for applying and stepping up to want to help move our city forward.
Sure.
In your past history and positions that you've held, could you share with us here, as well as those at home, the most controversial issue you've ever been involved with that you had to make a decision or be part of the decision-making? How you made the decision and what came as a result of it?
Sure. What comes to mind is I was, I had purchased a townhouse in a branded community, and the developer was turning it over to the residents to establish the first board. And at that time, we realized that we had some problems. And the problems were, we didn't have much money in the reserves. Hurricane came in, did a tremendous amount of damage. And at that time, I had to take, once I was elected as a board member, I took the time to find the contractors, figure out what we needed. We had to get rid of the property management company that was overcharging us that the developer owned, as well as the landscape company, the pool company, and other vendors that all needed to be replaced to save the community money. And more importantly, it saved a special assessment. But that particular, it was a lot of weight on my shoulders, but ultimately, I saved not just them, the extra money that people couldn't really afford at that time, but also myself.
Thank you.
Welsh?
Thank you. Knowing that this is an appointed position and you only have 11 months, what, if anything, do you plan on accomplishing in that role?
Well, for the most part, I think I've kept up to date with current events. I've been a part of the city for, I've been living here for over 23 years. I think a lot of the issues that need to be voted on or addressed, I've been following, and I believe that I can definitely add some input and help maybe even compromise with what the community wants, especially the people in my district.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate, you know, being a candidate and applying and the willingness to step up. We ask you to take a seat, and at the end of the interviews, we'll have a discussion and a vote.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Anthony Raynon?
Good evening. So my name is Anthony Raynon, and I'm here with you guys after the long evening that we've been through. And this time of year, I guess, you know, the holiday season, most of us are probably thinking about our families and probably reflecting on our own Christmases as children. And growing up, Christmas for my family was in our family liquor store with my dad, grandfather, grandmother, aunt, cousin. And we would work the entire night, try to get those cases into the cars as fast as we could because we only had about six spots in the parking lot, so, you know, move people through. And then afterwards, we'd go to my uncle's where the seven fish would already be cold. And we'd maybe make it to midnight mass. And, yeah. And back then, I never appreciated it. I thought it was terrible. You know, you're a kid. What do you know? And then, as you get older, and after you've had to give all that up, you realize, you know, it's something that you look back on fondly and you wish you could do it again, even if it was just one night. So I had to leave where I came from. I left Rhode Island right after college. I went to California because there weren't any opportunities for me in Rhode Island. And I went out there and I said, "Well, you know, what a rational 22-year-old's going to do? I'm going to be a rock star." So I went and did that. And I had to figure a lot of things out. You know, there's not a path carved for you. So it was a lot of, well, my band quit. Now what am I going to do? How do I find people? How do I find a job? How do I find a place to live? Figuring things out. And I managed to be successful in those things. I managed to get my band together, play on Billboard and all of these other things. And I had to figure that out in life, that the best plans don't always work. And so, and I've seen it in my job, my careers, my education, master's program, doctoral program, is the best, most well-intended things fall apart. And so, I just, with that experience and knowing how to avoid these things that I've seen happen in Rhode Island and California, and make sure that they don't come here so that my kid doesn't have to abandon home so I can, you know, be with him when he's older. And that's my two cents. That's why I'm here.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk.
Hayden?
Anthony, thank you for applying.
Thank you.
My question to you is, I believe one of the main missions of this council is to plan the city's future over the next 20 or 30 years. If appointed, what do you believe is the one issue that would help us reach that goal and why?
Well, right now, I think we really need to focus on expanding commerce. One of the reasons I left was because I looked at, if you look at the state of Rhode Island's, who the biggest employers are, it's number one, the state of Rhode Island, number two, the hospital, and number three, the school district. And if we look at Cape Coral right now, we could see that the largest employer is Lee County School District, followed by the hospital, followed by the city. And having that kind of structure, it doesn't lend itself to very much opportunity for the young people who are going to grow up and be looking for careers, not jobs. You know, there's a big difference between getting to go and do something that you love every day and then just having to put food on the table. And so we have to have that sort of forward-thinking to make sure that we have something here for these kids so they don't have to flee. And I think that what's going on right now with the expansion to the north, I think that's great. And I think that the go-bond that's being done with that festival park, that's going to be a huge draw for businesses.
Thank you.
Steinke?
Thank you. Thank you, Anthony, for applying and stepping up to help take our city forward. In your past history, in the positions that you have found yourself in, what would you say has been your most controversial issue that you've had to deal with, either making a decision yourself or working collectively with others to make a decision? What did you decide, and how did that turn out?
The most controversial decision I had to make was when I blatantly decided to sell out in the process of making my first record because the guy who was producing the record said to me, "Well, I have a Porsche. You should probably listen to me." And I said, "You know, that's a good idea. I should listen to the guy with the Porsche." And then I had to go on the radio and listen to all of these DJs tell me what a sellout I was when this record was finally done. And that didn't feel too good because I knew what I had done, so.
Okay, thank you.
Welsh?
Knowing that this is an appointed position and knowing that it's only going to be 11 months until you'll have to run for the seat through an election, what, if anything, do you feel that you can accomplish?
Right now, I think mostly it's going to be a learning process for anybody who's appointed who has never held the for anybody who's appointed who has never held the position before. So basically, they're going to have to elect somebody in the next election anyway. And if I at least have the experience and I am elected again, then it won't be as, it won't be learning after November. I'll come in relatively fresh for, well, I guess the next semester, we'd call it.
Thank you. Thank you for applying, and we'll invite you to have a seat.
Thank you.
At the end of the interviews, we'll have a discussion in a vote.
Jesus Rodriguez.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and the residents of Cape Coral, Florida. My name is Jesus Rodriguez, and I'm a proud resident of the city of Cape Coral for over 20 years. Today, I'm here to express my interests in serving on City Council. As maybe the youngest person here, 24-years-old, I stand before you today as a passionate and dedicated member to this community. I've seen the growth and development of our city firsthand. I mean, I was here since I was two-years-old. And I committed to ensuring that our community continues to thrive using the plan that we have in place. I'm here today because I believe that I can make a positive impact as a City Council member. Even though I am the youngest, I am a lifetime resident of Cape Coral and a former Youth Council member. I have a deep understanding of the challenges our city faces in terms of infrastructure, transportation, environmental, and I've seen the first-hand of the challenges that comes from traffic congestion, affordable housing, and others. I'm committed to working closely with my fellow members and the mayor to find solutions that benefits all residents. I'm excited about serving my community and making a positive impact on the lives of its residents since day one. My hope is to become the next mayor of Cape Coral. And the City Council provides a unique opportunity for me to express my skills, experiences, and ideas. Being considered for this council seat would allow me to work closely with other council members, other cities, other counties, and the federal government. I'm committed to ensuring all residents have access to resources and opportunities that they need to thrive. I believe we can find innovative solutions for our city and the challenges that we have. I believe our community is a crucial juncture, and we have an opportunity to build a more sustainable, equitable, and proper, prosperous future for all of our residents. As a member of City Council, I am committed to working tirelessly to ensure that our community thrives. No matter what, it's an honor to be here today, and I believe my experiences and skills make me an ideal candidate for the City Council of District Four and the residents of the city of Cape Coral, Florida. Thank you very much.
Hayden.
Jesus, thank you for, thank you for applying. My question for you is, I, I believe, one of the main missions of this council is to plan the city's future over the next 20 or 30 years. If you are appointed, what do you believe is the one issue that would help us reach that goal, and why?
The one issue that would help us reach that goal is not only to, obviously, settle the, the tax races and settling the tax rates and the fees for city services, but as well as making a plan with our strategic plan that we have in place to allow that to not only better our community, but also better, and give better resources to the, to the citizens of Cape Coral, if that answers your question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steinke.
Thank you. Thank you, Jesus, for, for applying and stepping up to help move our city forward. In, in your past history, in positions that you found yourself in, could you share with us the most controversial issue you've ever been involved with, where you or a collective body you've worked with has had to make a decision about that? How you made the decision, and what came as a result of that?
Yes, when I was on the Cape Coral Youth Council, we did have to make a, a recommendation to City Council about the water, the water UEP expansion project at the time that I was on there. It is also a controversial issue now, even with the, being so high and residents paying so much. But the way we solved that, we did, I don't remember the recommendation off the top of my hand that was given to City Council, but I, that, that did happen at that meeting. That answers your question. If not, please let me know.
Thank you.
Welsh.
Knowing that this appointment is only for 11 months, and then you'll have to either run again or even potentially return the seat to who lost it, what, if anything, do you believe you can accomplish in that short time?
We can definitely accomplish parts of the, of the strategic plan that the city has, as well as, I'm a firm believer in, in affordable housing. We definitely, I wouldn't say we need a lot, but I would definitely say we need a little bit more. Also, to kind of lessen the burden of our taxpayers with that UEP project as well. Definitely, public infrastructure as well is, is in effect to that. So one of my main goals would be that affordable housing within those 11 months. I mean, I'm willing to do whatever it takes and meet with developers and do whatever it takes for, for our citizens. It's not about me, it's about them.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That's all the questions we asked. We're going to invite you to have a seat. We'll have a discussion in a vote at the end of all the interviews. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Thank you.
Karen Solgard.
My name is Karen Solgard. I've lived in Cape Coral for 12 years and in District Four since 2016, when we built our house. And I just want to thank the council members for all the time and effort you've put into seeking the replacement for District Four. I calculate that each candidate has interviewed for two and a half hours, while you each have interviewed for six and a half hours. So thank you for that. A question that I was asked frequently was, "Will I run for the seat?" I will. And the other thing is, when I first signed up for this, I thought, "I can do this job." I know, city, I know the city of Cape Coral. When I first moved here, I took the Citizens Academy class, and I did it because, as a loan officer, I wanted to know the community as best I could. As a loan officer, I take care of people's lives because they're looking for homes. I can't get it wrong unless I want to have bad phone calls about why their loan got denied. So I dig deep, I do the research, and I make sure that everything, very quickly, is right with their loan before I submit it. And that way, I make sure that, that we're successful and that they get their home and their family can move into their house. One of the things that propelled me to step up for this is because of my unique perspective. As a loan officer, I talk to the families. I've seen how the higher interest rates and how the higher prices here in Cape Coral are making homes here unaffordable. And they're unaffordable, not for the low-income people, but for the middle-class, for the people who actually run the place. And we have to do what we can as City Council members to make sure that we're creating space for workforce housing. And it's not just all being bid up by the people who are coming for their vacation homes and for their second homes. So I know that that has been a priority of the council, and I commend you for the efforts you've made. But I think I can contribute even more because of my unique perspective. I know what people's salaries are. I, I know what they're struggling with, and, and I've listened to the stories. So one of the things I did, thinking about running for the office, was I did a little experiment. I said, "Well, maybe what I can do is see how many people that I know would endorse me." And so, I texted and messaged my friends, my past clients, realtors I've worked with, people I volunteer with, and I asked them, "Would you be willing to write an email to the council?" So I sent your email addresses, except I forgot the mayor's. And, and then that's the result.
Hayden.
Hi, Karen. Thank you for applying.
Thank you.
I believe one of the main missions of this council is to plan the city's future over the next 20 or 30 years. If appointed, what do you believe is the one issue that would help us reach that goal, and why?
Well, I've served on transportation committees. I've served on Neighborhood Revitalization Task Force. And I do believe that it's the, the things in tandem that will propel us into the future are the combination of making sure we have, you know, a mix of housing availability, keep people close to their jobs so they're reliable, and also to make sure we have a multimodal transportation system. And, and as the city grows and gets more dense, we're going to need to get cars off the road and get people walking, biking, busing, to get to work.
Thank you.
Steinke.
Thank you, and thank you, Karen, for applying and stepping up to contribute to moving our city forward. As you think about your past and positions that you have been in, for those in attendance and those watching at home, what would you share to be the most controversial issue that you've ever faced, been involved with, where you had to make a decision yourself or collectively with others? How did you make that decision, and what came as a result of it?
Well, the revitalization project that I hinted at, the, the City Council in Minneapolis put all the revitalization funds back into the neighborhoods and said, "You decide how you want to distribute these funds, and then propose to us how you're going to do it." So it was over a three-year period of time where we took, we took community feedback, much like the, the go-bonds and all the community meetings. And then we, we prioritized, we voted. I did a lot of the tabulation. And then ultimately, the funds were distributed, allocated according to the, the high priorities and percentages and all that, and we presented it to the City Council. Ultimately, some decisions were made that I didn't agree with, but it's a democracy, and so I continued to work and strive to make the project be as best I could, given the decision that the group made.
Thank you.
Welsh.
Yes, understanding that this is an appointment, and the appointment is only going to be for 11 months before you'll have to run for the seat permanently, or not permanently.
For two years.
Yes. What, if anything, do you expect to accomplish in that short period of time?
Well, all of us are, are just guardians for a short period of time, all of us, even you, all of us. And what we have to do is think about ourselves in the, in the bigger stream of things. Where, where has the city been? Where are we going to go? I'm a fast learner. I, I do my research. I dig deep. And I think I offer a different perspective from my vantage point, because I've been a small business owner. I've, I've been a musician. I've toured. I've been a loan officer. I've done a lot of things in my life. And I, and I do believe that even in a short time, I can add a different perspective. And I have a, a method that I look at things from all angles. I'm very deliberative and data-driven.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for applying and being a candidate. We'll invite you to have a seat. We'll go through the remainder of the interview process, and we'll have a discussion in a vote at the end.
Thank you.
Bob Sutter.
Yes. Don't start my time now, because I'm slow and old. I'll get to the, I'll get to pretty quick, so. Which one? Please, you hear me? Oh, fantastic. Can you hear me? Is everything okay? All right. I'd like to, first of all, say good evening, fellow citizens, council members, and Mayor Gunter. I'd like to take a moment just to thank you all for meeting with me last week. It was a privilege. I enjoyed very frank discussions. With that being stated, you all know who I am. I'm going to address my comments to the larger community with that. So for those that came here tonight to support me, thank you very much. I appreciate it. It's humbling. So what separates Bob Sutter from everyone else? Well, I'm an Eagle Scout. I'm an Army veteran. 20 years in the military. I'm a disabled veteran. And I'm proud to represent a very large portion of the Cape Coral community, our veterans. Our community has nearly 14,000 veterans and family members. We have over 60 military and veteran organizations within Cape Coral, and more than 200,000 veterans and their family members visit the Cape Coral VA facility annually. My Army career spans from the falling of the Berlin Wall to Operation Desert Storm Desert Shield, to Bosnia-Kosovo, to Operation Enduring Freedom, Iraqi Freedom. To be blunt, I was a bit surprised to find out that not a single member of the City Council was a veteran, let alone a disabled veteran. And I say that because aren't we recognized as the Purple Heart City? A common question I've been asked over the past few weeks is, "Why do I want to become a City Council member?" And my responses remain steadfast. It's my duty. It's my duty to make our community a better place to live. With a master's degree and more than 35 years of leadership experience, I'm a seasoned leader that can make non-emotional, sound decisions while under duress. I've always led with integrity and never hid from asking tough questions or making even tougher decisions, and I vow to do the same as a City Council member. What would I change? My experience has taught me to conduct an assessment of all activities and learn why these decisions were made. And only then can I become a true steward of change. With that being stated, over the past two years, I've had the opportunity to speak with several residents, our Cape Coral residents, and they voiced their concerns to me. And I believe that we can begin to address one of the concerns immediately, and it was evident in today's meeting. Many residents within the community believe that our City Council is broken, that it lacks integrity, and that their voice doesn't count. As a City Council member, I will focus on restoring the community's faith and trust in our City Council with an emphasis on transparency. I would take it upon myself to continue to attend public events and make myself available to the community to listen to your concerns and correct any misunderstandings. I just have one last appointment to say, if you don't mind, sir. Lastly, with my diverse education and experience, I am confident that I can hit the ground running on day one. Thank you.
Hayden.
Hi, Robert. Thank you for your service. Thank you for applying. My question is, I believe that one of the main missions of this council is to plan the city's future over the next 20 to 30 years. If appointed, what do you believe is the one issue that would help us reach that goal, and why?
Well, thank you for the question. It's a very good question, because I too believe that it is the committee to lead the citizens of Cape Coral into the future, whether it be 20, 30, 40 years from now. One of the things that I would, hopefully, we would look into, and this is very simple, this is what one of the residents had told me, minor, but makes a big impact, is that when we begin to build out our infrastructure and our streets going out, that we, and the streets, we put in sidewalks with lights. She said, "Bob, you know, I've got kids. They go to the bus stop. They're walking on the street because there's no sidewalks, there's no lights. They sit where they're supposed to sit, waiting for the bus to come, and Bob, there's not one light." supposed to sit, waiting for the bus to come, and Bob, there's not one light." So, my belief is that, to be quite frank, is safety, you know, as we begin to expand. People think, "Oh, my God, we're going too fast." I'm going to tell you, you know, this is not the field of dreams. You build it, they will show up. They're showing up. We have to build it. We don't have a choice.
Thank you.
Steinke?
Thank you. Thank you Bob for your service and thank you for applying and looking to participate in moving our city forward. When you think back upon the various positions that you've had in your life and positions that you found yourself in, could you share with us here and those watching at home what you believe to be the most controversial decision that you ever were involved with, either making yourself or collectively with others? How you went about making that decision and what came as a result of that?
So, decisions in the military, you know, they're tough. You know, they're really tough. You've got people's lives in your hands, everything you do. Sometimes you can make a decision by taking advice from other people, listening to the people in the town, but sometimes your decisions are just tough. Like when you have to deploy overseas and you have to tell a family member that, you know, "Understand it's your birthday," but they got to deploy. So, my toughest decision I've ever made in my military experience has been sharing with family members that their loved ones have to go and deploy across the pond. So, that's the toughest decision I've ever had to make. Because everybody always says, "Why me?" And you have to explain to them, "Why them?"
Okay. Thank you.
Welsh?
Thank you. My question is, knowing that this appointment is only for 11 months, and then you'll either have to run again or potentially resign pending, you know, litigation, what do you think or what do you expect actually to accomplish in that short amount of time, if anything?
Well, for that short amount of time that we're looking at, you know, the period between today and November, what I want to accomplish is to restore the faith of this city into the city council. And since you can only do that through transparency, through being out in the public, through being available to talk with people whenever they have questions, concerns, and I know you can't address every concern that people have, but I want to work very hard, very diligent at restoring the faith of the city, you know, the residents in this city council, because it was evident earlier today that it is lost.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you applying. We invite you to have a seat. We have, I believe, one more interview, and then we'll have a discussion and a vote from there.
Thank you very much. And may I say one last thing? Real simple. I have but one ask of everybody tonight. This is the holiday season. It's upon us. Please keep your military personnel and your family members and your thoughts. This is the highest time for suicide across the military. God bless America.
Thank you.
Blair Velaz? Blair Velaz?
Hi all.
How you doing? You have three minutes for an open statement.
All right. Well, thank you so much for having me, Mayor, Council, residents, mom. I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to come up here and talk with you, especially about my hometown. I know that a lot of people have told you a lot of different things about why they love Cape Coral and why they should be, or why they should be chosen and why they'd be a really great asset, and I'm not going to change your, I'm not going to change that plan. But I do want to share with you my passion. Growing up here, it's difficult to be able to say that you chose to stay here, and it's one of the things that I value the most. I take pride in saying that after I graduated high school and was forced to be here by my parents, I chose to stay and to invest in the community. From being a pastor to doing part-time missions, working for-profit and nonprofit organizations, working for abuse counseling and treatment centers, becoming a mediator, working for the school system, even though it was at the collegiate level and the university level, I was still giving back to my community. I may not have a lot of experience in politics per se, but I bring a competitive advantage for conflict resolution, communication, and passion. I know that there are a lot of different things that are going to be brought forward, as we saw tonight, right? And to be able to handle them well is, I commend you all for maintaining your composure in difficult situations, and that's something that I myself do. I'm first-generation American, so my father is an immigrant from Cuba and my mother is an immigrant from Colombia. And even though I'm first-generation American, one of the things that my parents always taught me is that I'm an American first and everything else comes second. I still value my culture and the ability to be bilingual and speak Spanish, but I know that my hometown right now needs this bridge of gapping and trust. And so, I want to be able to bridge that gap, whether it is now, chosen by y'all, or in the future. I want to thank you for your time and I want to thank you for consideration, for choosing me for District Four. I might not be perfect, but I'm going to do the best that I can with every single opportunity that I'm given now and with whatever comes. Thank you.
Hayden?
Hi Blair.
Hey.
How are you?
Good, thank you.
Thank you for applying.
Thank you.
I believe that one of the main missions of this council is to plan the city's future over the next 20 to 30 years. If appointed, what do you believe is the one issue that would help us reach that goal and why?
While there are a number of things that I want to do, I want to make sure that we have a community that embraces everyone. Myself, I have invested interest in my parents' generation, in my generation, and then I have three beautiful nieces that are going to be growing up and choosing to stay here. So, the next few choices that we make, whether it's in infrastructure, with water, with the parks, or wherever we choose to involve ourselves first, we do have to address those issues. So, making sure that we're growing well and that we're making the right decisions, not just for today, but for tomorrow as well.
Thank you.
Steinke?
Blair, thank you for coming in, thank you for applying, and thank you for stepping up in an effort to help move our city forward.
Thank you for having me.
As you think back on all the experiences that you've been involved with in the past, what would you say has been your most controversial issue that you've ever had to deal with, where you had to make a decision or collectively with others had to make a decision? How did you make that decision and what came as a result of it?
So, I'm thinking back to my time with, when I worked with abuse counseling and treatment centers. I was a child welfare and domestic violence advocate, and my tenure while I was there was at the Department of Children and Families. So, when abused women and children would come in, they would, the children would experience some sort of domestic violence and they would view it. And it was always probably the most difficult to be able to work through because you have three different sides, right? His side, her side, and then the truth. And to be able to navigate those, I had to make sure that I was listening attentively, that I wasn't going in with emotion, and that I was making the right decision for not just the minor child, but also for recuperating the lifestyle of the survivor, while making sure that the person, the abuser, was held accountable.
Thank you.
Welsh?
Thank you. Knowing that this appointment is only for 11 months and then you'll have to run again.
Correct.
What, if anything, do you expect to accomplish in that short period of time?
I want to bring in a sense of trust. Thank you for your question, by the way. I want to bring in a sense of trust. There's a lot of different opinions, and because there's vacancies in the board that wasn't expected, there's a bridge of communication. And having a communication and background right now, I think I need to make sure to listen to what's going on and to make sure that I'm well-read in whatever area. But I think the water issue probably comes to mind the most, that I think is, I'm going to want to put my effort toward that because we need, we need the basics first. So, hopefully, I can make ground or break ground in that myself and join y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ask you to, since you're the last candidate, please have a seat.
Okay.
The council will have a discussion and eventually a vote.
All right. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you. Before we get started in our discussion, I want to take the opportunity to thank each and every candidate for their willingness to step up, serve our community, and it was an honor and a privilege to speak and interview with each individual that applied. So, again, thank you. With that being said, I'll open up to council if they have any discussion. Once that discussion is completed, we will go down our voting roll like we have in any other appointment. We'll pick an individual, and our goal here is to eventually get to a majority vote where there's a candidate that receives four votes. So, we'll start that process. First, I'll open up and see if there's any council discussion. If there's no discussion, then I'll turn it over to Madam City Clerk to go down that voting order. Not seeing any discussion. Madam City Clerk?
Hayden?
Rich Carr.
Long?
Carr.
Shepherd?
David Orlovsky.
Steinke?
Rich Carr.
Welsh?
Karen Solgard.
Cosden?
Jennifer Nelson.
Gunter?
Rich Carr.
So, that's four for Carr, one for Nelson, one for Orlovsky, and one for Solgard.
Do I have a motion to reflect the majority vote?
I'll make a motion to appoint Rich Carr to the District Four seat.
Second.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd? Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Madam City Clerk, I believe you'd like to have a 10-minute break, is that correct?
Yes, Your Honor, that would be great.
Okay, we will come back at 8:42. Okay, we will come back at 8:42.